Welcome everybody to the workshop agenda. Um, it's currently. Twenty minutes after two, any public comments for this one? No? Alright, we will just dive right in to item one. Which is discussed as maybe needed in regular meeting agenda items for the meetings for tonight. So either staff. Or council, anything? Does it work good?
Yeah. Hi, you want me to have a?
You can check all my bases. I don't want to be the phone call. Everybody's okay with item one? Staff? Alright, item two is to receive a presentation regarding the tenant-based rental assistance program. Ms. Lover?
Yes, thank you, Mary. So, the presentation is about the tenant-based rental assistance program, but I want to start off by just giving you guys some good news. And a huge thank you for your support. Um, because of your generosity and your leadership, we were able to complete our first heart client's home. This past week, we moved her in on Tuesday. And it was just such a great day, such a, such an awesome, um, project and just wanted to show you guys. So this is the before picture, this was the home that we tore down that she was living in. You could actually see into the home from outside in places that weren't windows. Um, there were tarps all over the roof, it was just a, a deplorable situation that she was living in. And, um, we were able to tear that down and build this in its place.
Where is that?
It's on twenty-fourth street, three oh three, south twenty-fourth is the address. Um, so in the Ferguson Park neighborhood.
And she would be able to? For the, the tax?
Yeah, we, we have encouraged them to try to, you know, get, um, homestead exemptions and just a variety of different things. To, uh, help minimize that impact. There is no payment on the house, this is a completely granted program for them. Um, another thing we do encourage them to do is get homeowner's insurance. Uh, but we have sourced some inexpensive options for them for that. So, um, we're trying to do everything that we can to try to minimize that. So this is a view of Tuesday, we, uh, were able to get her all moved in. Leadership Temple came and helped us move her furniture. Um, they cleared the lawn of all the debris and planted some shrubbery in the front. And, um, with the help of my amazing team, of course, everyone helped. And, uh, were able to set up a Christmas tree for her and Christmas lights on the outside. And then, um. Two other things I want to just point out, the, the board at the bottom, that came from her original house. The team has taken something from every house. And are going to repurpose it into some sort of crafty thing for them to have as a housewarming gift when they get their new home. So, um, this piece actually had like old vermicah or no, like tile flooring stuff stuck to it, I don't know, it was a, it was a mess. Um, so they cleaned it all up and Brittany freehanded the name on there. She painted the name and then the team added the little knobs for the coat hanger. Um, feature, so super cute. And then the other thing I wanted to point out too, the granite countertops. That wasn't supposed to happen, we got granite for, for the same cost that the vermicah countertops were gonna cost us. The cabinet guy was gonna be delayed by the vermicah guy. So, uh, he didn't want to make that, that pot, um, hold up the, the project. So he had some extra granite that he's given us for the houses for all four of the ones that we're working on right now. So they're all getting this amazingly beautiful granite countertop space.
I like that you use Leadership Temple there too, that's good. Tell them what it's all about.
Exactly, and that's a great segue. So while they were moving her in, Whitney Terrio from the chamber was there with the Leadership Temple team. And she noticed that they didn't, we didn't have a built-in microwave. So she went out, talked to the Leadership Temple class and they gathered up enough money to buy her a new microwave for Christmas. They wrapped it up with a Walmart gift card and Brittany delivered it this week to Ms. Johnson and that's her happy face. Yeah, so it was really great. And then just one more quick minute, I have to brag on my amazing team. So we had, we had a meeting with one of the, um, social service agencies who was working with a mom. Who had gone through substance use disorder treatment this past year. When she was in the depths of her addiction, she had lost custody of both of her kids. Aged, uh, fourteen, I think the oldest is fourteen and the youngest is ten. She was able to get clean, she got back on her feet, she got a job, she got an apartment. And just got her kids back, she got her, her fourteen-year-old back in September and her youngest just out of the blue. Last Thursday. So. I said, well, is she ready for Christmas? Like, you know, I mean, I can't imagine like suddenly getting my kids back for Christmas. And of course, she was like, well, no, she's, you know, she's just trying to do the best she can, she's in this one bedroom apartment and trying to figure it out. But she's really, really happy and so I just shot an email out to my team. And they went out and got all of these gifts. I think it ended up being like seven per person for the families that were in there. And just incredible generosity and I just, I, I just can't say enough about them.
Thank y'all for that.
You really make people get to know that that's who you are leaving the city with, when, when we all retire, there's your next generation.
Great.
Alright, okay, back to our regularly scheduled programming. So, the rental reinvestment program, I'm sorry, the tenant-based, uh, rental assistance program is through. The Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs, ironically, the same program that we, um, are using to rebuild the, the homes that I just showed you. This is another, uh, program that's available through our current contract that we have with them. When we started the contract that we're under right now, we had the option of adding TBRA. But at that time, we were just sort of getting into this, really didn't know, um, that much about the rental assistance aspect of it. Or really how it would work in with the, the mission and the, um, vision of our department. So we didn't add it that, at that point. But now that we have been working more with people experiencing homelessness and really trying to do. Some effective programming ahead of having the Arbrooke campus open. We can now see a real value in having access to those, um, tenant-based rental assistance vouchers. And it's essentially the same as a housing choice voucher or a section eight voucher.
Essentially, but what's different?
It's just through the state.
Oh, that's the only difference?
Yes ma'am, that's the only difference. The tenant can take the voucher and go to whichever unit they can find that will accept the vouchers. So it's not, it's not tied to a project or to a apartment complex. It's mobile, it follows the tenants.
Okay, good.
Um, but it's just available through the state. So, um, the assistance is only provided for two years, that's another difference. Uh, with other section eight and, um, housing choice voucher programs, it can be longer than that. But this is just meant to be a self-sustainability sort of, of program. So we have those two years to really work with that client to make sure that they can sustain themselves, um, after that two-year period. And then we can provide that voucher to the next person.
Nancy, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you all started exploring this opportunity. Um, in part to help, um, some of the folks that are in our, on our scholarship bed for substance abuse treatment so that when they graduate. From that program, um, there, they have, um, a stable home to go to, to help them continue to be successful and staying sober.
Yes ma'am, so the, the, um, current scholarship beds that we have, that, that funding that you all allocated has been extremely successful. And, um, they're running out of money at the end of this month for that first hundred and fifty thousand. The contract was supposed to be through April, so that just sort of shows you how successful it's been. They've been able to put twelve people through substance use disorder treatment and, um. And successfully held all but two out of that program. So, um, we're, we're working really, uh, quickly and diligently to try to find housing for those last two folks and they're not gonna put them out. On the street at the end of the month, um, they're gonna find other ways of, of keeping them in if we don't have the ability to use the TBRA. Um, vouchers for them, but, but yeah, that was really why we wanted to press on this and, and try to get it in place. Um, for that purpose and then also just for regular street outreach that the social service agencies are wanting to really start in January. Doing more outreach in the field and case management in the field. Um, and that, that's being motivated, I think mainly because of the, the impending closure of that, the shelter in Colleen. You know, we're, we're not sure how that's gonna impact us on, on this side of the county. But I think the agencies just really want to brace for that and try to put in place as many services as possible, um, ahead of that, so, um. So having these vouchers and access to these vouchers is really gonna be a key component to not only helping the substance. Client, as Brett mentioned, but also just providing that level of help for, for those clients that are currently, um, living in encampments. So, uh, TBRA can be used for rent, uh, security deposits, which is basically the first and last month's rent. Uh, utility deposits and administrative costs. It will not cover application fees, so that is something that the city would need to cover. Um, and I have a chart that sort of shows what the projected cost would be, it's very, very minimal. It's something that the Housing and Community Development Department can absorb into its regular budget. Um, overnight or temporary shelters, shelters like hotel stays would not be eligible for this program. Homeownership or down payment assistance for, uh, purchasing a home wouldn't be eligible, although we do have access to. Some other programs, if someone is interested in buying a home, we can, we can direct them in a different way. Um, displacement or relocation assistance, so, um, we'll go back to our part client. If we had any relocation expenses for her, we couldn't use TBRA to cover that. Um, so we would still have to find other resources for those types of things. Um, a unit that's already receiving subsidy assistance, so if it's a project-based, um, home that's already. Or, uh, rental that's already, uh, receiving a subsidy, they wouldn't be able to use it there. Um, utility deposit only, so sometimes we'll have sit cog, um, provided vouchers by housing choice vouchers. Um, if one of those clients just needs help with utility assistance, we can use TBRA for that. Um, it has to be related to our, uh, TBRA program. Pet deposits, telephone cable and internet are also not included. We have reached out to, um, several of our social service agencies though about helping with some of those costs and we have. Several partners that are willing to step up and help, um, as needed. So responsibilities essentially are to administer the program, um, working with the clients and the case managers to make sure that. All of the application, uh, information is received for the TBRA side and then also for the apartment side or the unit side. Um, maintaining a waiting list and, uh, we intend to use the same waiting list policy that we have currently for our home program or our heart program. And, um, that's essentially first come, first served, uh, when we get a, a completed application, then they go on that waiting list and it's just in order of date, essentially. Um, tenant selection and making sure that we are matching a tenant with a landlord and that it's a good fit, some landlords have. Very specific policies that relate to background. Um, and, you know, criminal history and, and things of that nature, whilst some may be a little bit more lenient with that. So we'll be able to keep that list of, of available, um, landlords and what their requirements are to be able to make those matches well. We'll also coordinate with case managers to make sure that the client is going through all of this self-sustainability, um, steps and classes that they need to. Uh, over the course of the two years. We will perform and by we, I mean Clay and, and Kirby. Will, uh, perform the HQS inspections and they've already been doing that with our heart program and the rental reinvestment program. And by the way, I failed to mention, but Kirby has been project manager with Doug. Over the heart program and Doug and Kirby, I, I mean, they're just incredible. Can't say enough about Doug and his help with that. Um, so I failed to mention that and I am sorry, he, he's wonderful. Um, but anyway, Kirby and Clay will be able to do those inspections and then, uh, we'll also monitor, um. Compliance with federal, state and local departments. And manage a landlord engagement program. The landlord engagement program is basically just a program that will help us to identify and work with landlords. For this program specifically. Providing them with a, um, list of benefits and with. The proper support that they need in order to take the risk of having someone in their unit that's been experiencing homelessness. And, um. We've modeled this after other communities that have successfully been able to do it. And it's just a great resource to have, uh, basically an online list of, of available units. What their price points are, what any, uh, regu, rules and regulations that they might have. And then, um, the ability for us to match those clients with them, you know, in real time. We hope to ultimately be able to expand that to other agencies like Salvation Army who already has their own landlord engagement program. But still, you know, sharing that information with them and all of them with SitCog. Um, so that would be part of, um, what we would be able to do.
Do we, are you finding receptive landlords?
We haven't really started asking the question yet, uh, wanted to make sure you guys were all okay with it before we started to do much of that. But from what we gathered from the VA who also does landlord engagement and Salvation Army, they have several landlords that, that work with them on a regular basis. So, um, we're hoping that we'll have the same success. So the tenant selection process is, um, is pretty, uh. Safe, uh, you know, federal, um, long application processes. But we're gonna take the lion's share of that on to ourselves and, and really walking alongside the, the client and the case manager to gather the necessary documentation. And that sort of thing, but one of the main things that we've, we will need is a certification that the individual is indeed experiencing homelessness. And there are a variety of ways that we can certify that. But the intention with this program is to really focus on that population. And, um, not having it just open to anyone that might need a housing, housing voucher. We will refer those folks to SitCog or some of the other partners. Um, so this will be just for people experiencing homelessness. Um, we also want to make sure that the individual either has income or is working towards having an income. If they don't have an income, if, at the beginning, that's okay, there is a zero income certification that they can, a form that they can sign that says they don't have an income at that time. But if they aren't, um. Not eligible for any sort of federal assistance like social security or disability benefits or disability, um. Uh, payments, then we will help them get employed, uh, ultimately through, with the help of their case manager. So. Having that income or a zero, uh, income verification is part of that process. They will be required to pay thirty percent of their gross monthly income, so it, it will be a co, a contribution from the tenant. Uh, towards their rent. And, um, the, the TBRA program would pay seventy percent. Um, if the applicant doesn't have an income at this, at the beginning of it, that's okay. The TBRA program would pay for a hundred percent until they are able to, um, secure an income. Uh, case management will be required and we intend to work again with our social service agencies in town to provide that case management. It is really important for us to have those types of professionals that, that understand the, the, um, the challenges that these individuals face. And that can really walk beside them and help them through that process. So, um. Part of that case management is using either HMIS or a different program that's called Charity Tracker. That the agencies have been trying, it's really gonna be u- up to them. Um, because this isn't related to, um. Necessarily HUD reporting, we can use a different, uh, software program for that, that internal tracking mechanism, which is great because the agencies hate HMIS. Uh, pretty much across the board. So, um, really hoping that that will be able to work for, uh, for us to just use that charity tracker. But we will ask for regular reporting. As far as the housing search goes, um, it, it will really be up to the tenant, the tenant will be able to choose the unit that they, that they stay in. Hence the, the concept of tenant-based rental assistance. Um, so, uh, but we will help them and, and especially with that landlord engagement program, we'll have a list already. Of landlords that are willing to participate in the program and what types of vacancies they currently have. Um, but again, we'll, we'll look at those factors based on each individual unit and that, and the circumstances for. For renting that, if we have a client that will, that will match well with that landlord, we'll make that match. Um, for them, we will also review the leases and make sure that there's nothing in the lease that is, um, that would be a hindrance for the client. Or vice versa, there's nothing that, um, that the client might have in their history that would be a hindrance for the landlord. So, um, we really want to make sure that we're looking at those, those, uh, adequately. So the length of the lease, making sure it's no less than twelve months. Um, addressing late fees, discouraging late fees if possible, getting them to waive those, uh. And then just any, um, non-payment or eviction policies, we want to make sure that they are given a, a lot of chances. Um, and understanding that there are three different entities that will have to be, um. Communicating with each other, so, uh. We'll, we'll make sure that we're looking at all of the fine print. We'll also make sure that if the, if the client does have a change of income, that the case manager notifies us and that we get that re-certification done. And we'll make adjustments in how much they're contributing versus how much the TBRA program is, is contributing. And then, um, recalculate that with a thirty-day window. And then, uh, the landlord, of course, will be notified as well, we'll keep them up to date and hopefully we'll have lots of changes in income through that two-year period. As they continue to become more self-sufficient and, um, we see that incrementally increase. Any rent increases will also have to be approved by us, um, we're, we're gonna really rely on those leases to sort of lock in those rates. You know, for the, for the lease period, but in between lease periods, we will, um, make sure that any increases are approved by us. Utility allowances, this took me a little while to get my head wrapped around it and, um, I didn't even have medicine at, at that point, it was just a weird word, uh. Like verbiage. But essentially. The, um, the client will be responsible for paying their own utilities. They will have them in their name, they will get the bills, they will write the check and they will pay for their own utilities. We will provide them with, with an allowance however for those utilities, so here's an example, and I had to do this for myself just to visualize it. If their income is a thousand dollars a month, their household contribution to the total cost of housing is, um, thirty percent, so three hundred dollars. Their utility allowance is a hundred and seventy-five, so we reduce that from the three hundred and their contribution to rent is a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Um, so the rental subsidy from TBRA would be seven seventy-five. So they're paying for their utilities, we're not paying utilities, they're still responsible for that, we're just giving them that allowance.
Nancy, you said the, the client is responsible for writing the checks and paying. Lots of homeless people don't have checks or banking accounts, how do, how's that handled?
You know, um, I think that we'll probably have to, to figure that out on sort of a case, I think maybe the. Yeah, I know the housing authority wants a money order, um, so there probably would be some sort of process similar to that, I would think. Um, but yeah, that's definitely something we'll have to navigate for sure. So this is just an, a, a sort of outline of what the monthly program budget would be. The only out-of-pocket expense for the city again are the application fee, that's the only, um, expense that's not eligible for reimbursement, so everything else comes from the state. Um, so just as an example, the fair market rent for an efficiency is eight ninety-five. Security deposit seventeen ninety, utility deposit about five hundred, we, yeah. Just kind of throwing a number in there and then the application fee, so for one person for that, uh, to get them moved in and their, um. Their first month's rent paid and last month's rent and then. All of that is thirty-two sixty, of that, the city only pays for that application fee. Seventy-five dollars is sort of an average, they really vary, sometimes application fees are thirty dollars, sometimes they're twenty-five, sometimes they're fifty, sometimes they're seventy-five. Um, so we really sort of aimed high on that just to make sure that we, um, you know, we're, um. Taking all of that into consideration and not undershooting it, but really great value for, uh, what we're trying to accomplish and I think a great way for. Us to, to provide that support. So if a termination needs to happen, um, it ca, and that can happen if the person doesn't pay their rents, their portion of the rent. Then we could terminate their voucher. And for any lease violations, some leases will not allow pets, uh, you know, things like that. So if there are any lease violations that can't be negotiated or rectified. Uh, if the tenant fails to, to work with their case manager towards that self-sufficiency, that will re, uh, result in a termination. Um, if the apartment fails three consecutive inspections and those are done quarterly. So this would be a nine-month sort of window for them to fix whatever the issue is. And this, these are, these inspections would be on, on, uh, issues that the tenant was responsible for. If the landlord is responsible for. Any sort of issue like that, it won't result in the, the termination of the voucher, it may result in the, in the tenant going to a different unit though. Um, failure to report change of income would also result in a, um. Uh, termination and then, um, re, receipt of any other forms of subsidy or rental assistance is not allowed. And then, um, once the tenant leaves, they will keep their deposit. We had a lot of conversation internally about that and we just feel that that's the best way to go. If a, if a tenant at the end of the two-year period decides to stay in their unit for another ten years. We don't have the ability to really track that for that long and it's TDHCA funding. That is, that is, um, made up in that deposit and TDHCA doesn't care. They, they don't have a requirement for it to come back to them. So we feel like that's something that they're gonna need if they go to a different unit, if they move into a different place, they're gonna need those deposits. So we are just gonna allow them to keep those. We also want to use the rental reinvestment program as a way to, um, to help with. Any repairs over and above whatever the security deposit doesn't cover at the end of the stay. For that individual, if there are lots of damages, we can use the rental reinvestment program to cover the cost of those. And, um, that provides a great incentive for those landlords to participate in the program. We can also help with initial, um. Issues that need to be rectified from Kirby and Clay, if they go in and inspect the unit and it needs a lot of repairs just to pass inspection. We can provide them with this matching grant to help, um, offset the cost of that. It's exactly the way the rental reinvestment program was initially, um, built, um. But as you guys may recall, when we started that, we were, it was tied to housing choice vouchers at SitCog and now there aren't any there. So tying this to our program really makes a lot of sense, so we have control over those vouchers and, um. Can internally work with those landlords to, um, to provide those repairs.
Nancy, whenever you say that the housing vouchers through SitCog are no longer there, does that mean that they're, they're used up?
Yes sir.
Wow.
Yeah.
Just a couple of years ago, they, they were, there was a lot of money left on the table so to speak with those housing vouchers, so that's changed.
Yeah, it's kind of a weird, um. It's kind of a weird setup, they have several, uh, and I don't have a number, that are issued. To tenants that are still trying to find a unit that will accept the voucher.
Okay.
And, um. So those, they have, I think, a hundred and eighty days to try to identify a unit. And if they can't identify a unit within that time, then they go back to SitCog, but in the meantime, they're, they're not available, so, um. Hoping that all those people are able to find units and that, you know, but they, they run out pretty quickly once the application window opens. So this would give us our own sort of pool of vouchers.
Our port cabosso, uh, soldiers, they're not eligible for rent.
Oh, if they're homeless, they are.
The reason why I ask is that was a big push, if SitCog was to, actually that was a big push with Cabasos was that their housing allowance wasn't enough. Because renting, you know, because rents were going up in this area. And so I didn't know if, if an active duty soldier with a job. Whose housing allowance isn't enough might be able to, you know, private, rather than spending a thousand bucks or more for an apartment. Or whatever, whatever situations, if they might qualify.
Yeah, for this, um, particular part, we're really, people experiencing homelessness. Um, but ultimately, we might want to look at adding some additional vouchers for just individuals that are struggling with poverty.
And I wonder, I wonder if. And I wonder, I wonder if those housing vouchers are, are now being used so much. Cause again, they, they used to be looking for people to please take these.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, now that's not the case anymore, I just wonder if soldiers ever became available for that, and if it might somehow impact any other program that we're doing.
Yeah, that sure could.
Makes sense.
Mm-hmm, that sure could be it. Um, I'm, I'm not privy to that level of information within the SitCog program, but I can do some follow-up and see.
It's interesting, no, those are being gobbled up.
Yeah, yeah.
And might, you know, be impacting the people we're trying to help with this program. I don't know.
As for monitoring, we'll monitor this program the same that we do other uh, federal programs. So we'll do um, regular check-ins with the case managers, regular check-ins with the landlords and. Um, try not to work directly with the client if, as much as possible. And um, really relying on those uh, case managers for, for that part of it, but monitoring through the case manager. So this just sort of shows how all of these three programs really fit together well. The landlord engagement program, the rental reinvestment program and TVRA can really help um. Fill this, this um, this need that we have for these individuals that are experiencing homelessness right now. They just really need a second chance, they need to be able to get into a property that um. Will allow them the, the space that they need to get back on their feet, to get their, to get a job, to get that income coming back in and find self-sustainability. Um, we've worked with the Housing Authority to, to identify some barriers within their application processes. One of them is income, another one is ID, um, is a barrier. So this would be our, our opportunity to really try to reduce some of those barriers and get these folks housed as quickly as possible. So we really think that it's a, it's three programs with one big impact.
Um, is there a cap on the rent? The maximum rent?
Yes, we go by the fair market rent as um, as defined by HUD for our area. Yeah.
Are you only doing one bedroom or you looking at? Two, three?
We could go to a larger space, um, just kinda depending on the, the situation. Mm-hmm. It's not limited by TDHCA at all. And we, I don't think we've put any restrictions on that in the guidelines either, so that we can box ourselves in.
And our cap for the year is ten?
That's what we were wanting to try to start with, just because we're not really sure what that's gonna mean administratively. Um, I love Brittany and she can't quit, so. We don't, we're not really sure what this is gonna mean, um, so we were thinking ten would be a good goal. The, the window for our um, application to be renewed with TDHCA closes at the end of May. So this would be um, what we would hope to accomplish in, in a few months. And um, then reapply before the end of, of May, hopefully to do just a seamless. Contract renewal.
And then the LEP, are they the case managers?
No, so the landlord engagement program is really strictly to support the landlord side. And the case managers are gonna come from the social service agencies in town. Central County Services has said that they will provide uh, case management. The um, Salvation Army has some case managers there. The um, uh, the new Sunrise Center that Feed My Sheep is opening, they will have some case managers available there. And then the, the Agency Advisory Council is really the organization that's driving the outreach um, for encampments. They have said that, you know, looking at maybe having some UMHB social work interns come in to support. And um, you know, just kinda thinking outside of the box to try to get as many case managers in as we can. The typical load that you wanna stay within is twenty per person, twenty cases per case manager. And if we have the latest numbers that, you know, a hundred and fifty, two hundred people living. Uh, outside, um, you know, that's, it's gonna take quite a, quite a little army to, to do all of that case management, so. Um, we're definitely gonna rely on those social service agencies that help us out there.
But the existing social service agencies are theoretically. All full up, so to speak, their case managers are, are, have their caseloads. Are they indeed hiring more people to meet this increased demand or is there a hole here?
Well, I would say that um, none of them have said that they're gonna hire anybody else. But they're all very enthusiastic about helping with this street outreach. And I think they're all thinking, you know, many hands make for light work. And if we're all sort of going at this as a team, that we'll be able to accomplish it together.
Are those the case managers that are enthusiastic about it, or are those the administrators that are enthusiastic?
The administrators.
They're gonna tell the case managers to increase their load.
Well, or um, find other resources like the UMHB interns.
Oh, true.
That will, those will really be able to come in and, and assist.
And will those, will that, will those U, UMHB interns really understand or have the remotest idea what they're getting into and how to handle it?
Yeah, I'm hoping so, if, if they don't know, like, from the very beginning. Um, having the, the sort of more um, seasoned professionals sort of coming alongside them.
Okay.
They'll be able to.
Mentors helping them.
Yes, ma'am, yeah, there are currently, I think, six um, community outreach. At CCS, is that right, chief, do they have six community uh, counselors at CCS right now?
The mobile prices, sounds about right.
Yeah, so um, with those, I mean, if we were able to utilize those folks to. To provide some of that oversight for the interns, yeah.
It's great for the interns, I mean, it's a wonderful training program. But that's not our goal.
Yeah, I, I think I've, I've said this to you guys, at least I know I've said it in other uh, meetings. About the Arbor of Hope, that we're, we're literally building the plane as we fly it, this program will be no different. Um, so I think there will be a lot of things that we'll, we'll just sort of learn the hard way kinda as we go. But I think the good news is that the agencies are just locking arms and working together. But to try to come up with real solutions, they're looking at everyone's resources and trying to eliminate duplication of services and. Really funding um, individual agencies to do specific things. Which I think is a beautiful thing that I don't think has ever happened before. So I think we're seeing a lot of things happening that are very, very positive, that, that really make me feel that. We really do have a good chance to move the needle.
Good, wonderful. I, I overheard a conversation this past week, talking about your program. From Sassy's husband, I said, still over there, yes, he was bragging on your overall program and what you're doing to. Um, I don't know, somebody that, we, we were at the gym and I was just, I overheard it, but he was doing a wonderful job. Talking about how great your program was, so that's wonderful.
That's awesome.
And the person that he was.
It's because of these people, all right, Brittany, Cassie.
I feel like I'm in the middle of here.
I'll make her part of my team. Stephanie, Clay, Kirby, Big Aaron, behind you, yeah. I think Aaron will fight you.
Oh, yeah.
You're like, no. Um, just an incredible group of people, just the most generous hearts and just precious, um, precious folks, they're, they're. What make all of this.
Well, this person that was being, that was hearing this information was just agog with happiness. You know, it was really good.
I think it's a great program and like the use of partnerships without work as a community in your team. A lot of your guys.
Thanks, though.
Nancy, were you able to hear from whether a resolution from council is needed in order to address? Begin this program?
Um, I don't believe so, I think no.
Have you talked to Melissa?
I have not.
I think she thinks you need a resolution.
Okay.
I will be bringing a resolution to your next meeting to ask you to, uh. Probably for our internal procedures related to grant funds to, to allow us to use these grant funds for this program.
So that will be the, our next council meeting?
January fourth, yeah.
Thank y'all so much.
Nancy, can you tell me what the, is the Sunrise Council, Feed My Sheep?
Sunrise Center.
Center, what is that? I've not heard that, heard of that yet.
Yeah, it's a new initiative that they're just sort of starting with Vista.
Oh.
To provide mental health services, like day services for folks that are struggling with mental health issues. And they have a really great sort of advisory team that's helping lead that um, professionals in the field. And um, I personally think that it, it's a, it's gonna be a, a really good resource. There are so many people that are struggling with mental health issues that just can't make it to their appointments under the regularly scheduled time. So this would give them another option, I think they're also considering maybe some pharmaceutical support, so. If someone needs to, to come and take their meds or something like that, they can help them uh, in that way as well.
Are they doing that at the old Spindling Tire, where, where are they going to be located?
So it's, do you know where the Lamar sign is at the, at the um, intersection of First and Third Street? Just north of Avenue. It's a house.
Okay.
That has a big front porch, they're renovating it for that.
Good, I hadn't, I hadn't heard of that partnership.
That's where it'll be located?
Yes, ma'am.
But the signage isn't there yet?
No, they're just, I think, just getting started with it. Um, it's a, I, I believe is helping offset the cost of renovating the house. It needed a lot of work, so I think they're still sort of in that process.
And it's just north of Avenue F.
I believe Avenue F is the, maybe D, Y is, maybe E. Somewhere in that range.
Somewhere the Bydok and that curve.
Yeah, the, the road kinda splits and you can either stay on First or. Go to Third or go stay on First.
Yeah, you know, straight you go, you're on Third still, if you get curve over, you go First. Little barbecue place?
Yeah.
It's just south of the barbecue place.
Where Jurassic Grill tour used to be.
Right.
No?
Is that where the forest was?
Yeah, there's a rock. Yes, that's a little wood.
Yeah, that's haunted. Yeah.
So there's a little barbecue place. And on the other side of Jurassic is the old cleaners.
That's before the cleaners.
No, we didn't know, Google her.
The, the cleaners is south, you know, where we're tossing a bed.
It's, it's basically around the corner, coming north from Feed My Sheep, it's right there by Feed My Sheep.
Yes, it's about north of North of Feed My Sheep.
Okay. I'm gonna go there after this conversation. Okay, anything else for Nancy? Thank you.
Thank y'all for your support.
Thanks, you're staff, you guys do a great job.
My friend was getting her fur.
We should clap for Sassy's husband too, cause he was promoting him.
Alright, very good, thanks again, um, now we'll move on to item three. Which is to discuss the development of the customer care department and the implementation of a citywide three-one-one program. Let's begin this.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, I am super excited to share with you information today on a program that we have been working on. Uh, called Temple Three-One-One. And it really all starts with that top statement there, that people should not have to understand the city's form of government. To access information and services. Uh, right now, there are many points of contact with the city, uh, many published phone numbers, many avenues. Um, to, to request services or information, and it's not real clear to the public. Um, especially those that don't contact us often, how to get information uh, or, or request services from the city. So with a mission to provide outstanding customer service for general city inquiries, um, this program. Uh, Three-One-One Contact Center will work with all city departments to put together a knowledge base and. A process for um, community members, visitors or businesses to contact to request information or services from the city. Um, this will also help with workloads from the staff by taking some of that front-end work with the community off of them.
So how, do, what do you, you're gonna tell us, hey?
Yeah, so. Yes, I will tell you what it is, so Three-One-One is actually not new. It's about twenty-five to thirty years old, and I believe it was the City of Boston that first implemented Three-One-One. It was just a phone-based system where if you were in the city limits, you could pick up any phone and call Three-One-One and you would get this. Department, um, I guess it was kinda like a help desk or information desk. So since then, it's changed and it's become more of an omni-channel, um, and that's why we're referring to it as a contact center. Uh, because you, now the modern-day systems, you can text, you can chat, um, you can email. Uh, there's many different ways that you can contact the city. Um, so again, that's what I say there, is it began as phone-based, now there are all these different methods. We are working with IT and uh, Brandon's working with the Public Utility Commission. It's kind of a lengthy process to get an actual Three-One-One phone number for our area. But we will have one, if you're within the city limits of Temple and you pick up any phone and dial Three-One-One, it will come to this location.
Either mobile phones or?
Yes. Yes, so any, if you're within the city limits, now we'll have another published number, so if you're outside the city limits and you need to contact. We'll have like a main number that'll go to the same place. Um, so nationwide, and this is interesting because when you see kinda what the top city services that are requested are. Um, it falls right in line with this, so the top Three-One-One services uh, in the nation are for garbage and recycling services. Animal control, uh, just general questions about construction and development. Uh, street maintenance, um, and then code enforcement issues. So the need, right now, again, like I said, our customer service is really decentralized, there's not one. Um, place to contact to get information from the city. Uh, we have a low, what we would call a one-call resolution rate, and I know from the utility business office standpoint, we get a lot of phone calls. Because our numbers, you know, a lot of people have our number in front of them or know our number. And so we'll get questions, so they call us and then we transfer to another department. Um, and, and it, and it could just be, how do I do this, how do I get a permit, or how do I get a birth certificate? Well, we transfer to the department that handles that. Um, service requests aren't, they're not consistent, so if someone calls Public Works for, say, an issue with a pothole. Or they call code enforcement about some graffiti, all those are handled differently by each department. So the intake of that, that request is, is not consistent. Um, we don't currently have technology that shares all that information and keeps it in one, again, everybody works on their own systems. Um, and then we don't have a consistent process to follow up with, so now. Each department takes the request, handles the service, does the job, and each department might follow up with these uh, requesters, citizens or whoever it is. Um, differently, so there's no consistency in that. I got this information from um, IT and the communications and marketing team. And it, it's interesting, so on average, the City of Temple website is visited over forty-nine thousand times a month. Seventy percent of the um, traffic on our website is through a mobile device. The average events per session, and I had to learn what this is, is the number of clicks it takes on the website to find. Either what you're looking for or quit looking for it, so either you find it or you give up. And that's interesting to me because with, and all my research and all this, I think it was Harvard had a study that said. Eighty-one percent of people will go try to find stuff themselves before they call to ask for help. So most people go looking for the information, we've just gotta make it easier for them to find it. Um, the most requested service through Acela, which is the city's current service request uh, program, is for solid waste services. And approximately two hundred thousand inbound calls come to main. Come to main published working numbers um in the city per year. And um again, working with Brandon and IT, we were able to see that ten percent of those go to voicemail and then. Um eight thousand calls are abandoned. So either nobody picks up or the people just give up and hang it. So yeah, interesting. Um those a seller request, again, going back to what three one one service requests look like nationwide. Our top request from when I pulled this data and it's about three months old now, but solid waste services. Streets and transportation utilities and parking, so code enforcement. So our vision for this project is no wrong door. So we want to create one front door to the city where you can call and get. Information or request services and get a consistent answer and have a consistent process to get things done. Um so Temple community members can easily and effectively access city information and services. Employees have the tools and technologies that they need for a a service first approach. Um when working with callers or requesters and then city leaders, you guys have. Uh information about issues and maybe we can see that a certain area, there's always issues with um street repairs. Or we have more requests for solid waste services in certain areas. So depending on the software that we use, we'll be able to run reports to present to you guys what's going on in your districts. Okay, so here's our plan. Uh we're starting with process improvement. So we're going to just reengineer the whole customer. Or citizen request um intake and workflow management. And technology solutions. We want to, we have been really researching different um customer relationship management or CRM software is what it's called. To find one that will really integrate well with other departments' software. Uh one of the downfalls of a seller right now is that if we if the city manager office gets in a request for. Again, a pothole repair. That request is sent to Public Works. Public Works staff has to get that request in a cellar and then go do something that's in their system. So it's kind of created more work. And so there's a little bit of friction there. So we're looking for a solution that will integrate into City Works. So that when we take that information in and the contact center, it automatically pushes it to City Works. They get the notification and then and then they do the job. Um so we know technology is only as good as the information we put into it. So we are working real hard to find the right solution. And then we'll follow these other steps to make sure that we are are using it the best that we can. We will have service level agreements with each department that says. Whenever we have a pothole, it our typical response time is three days. So that will be given to. The requestor upfront so that they know. You know, don't expect this to be fixed tomorrow because it typically takes three days. Um and then, of course, on the backend, they're getting notifications. Um if their preferred method of text, email, whatever that is. Of where we are on in the process. Um and again, with along with technology is the staffing. Uh that'll be important to make sure we have the right people. Um you know, service driven people. To operate um. This program and then change manage management strategy, deciding how we're going to deploy this. Um citywide. So really two pieces to it. Um intake and resolve and then triage and refer. So intake and resolve. Is what we're thinking will be at least about seventy percent of the contact we get, which is just information. What time does some rec rec center open? Uh what time does the fireworks show start? Just general questions and information. Um schedules. Operating hours. Um and then things that people can do online with an app with our new app. We were gonna um. Upgrade the track temple app to be whatever this new solution is that we use. Uh so people can input the things themselves or triage and refer. Somebody needs in fifth information about. A building permit. So we're not going to issue building permits. We'll answer general questions about them. But if they have questions about specific things. We'll be able to make sure we pass them along to the right department. And make sure they're taken care of. We'll track that communication though, that that. Um citizen called our office, so we will have um record of that and we'll be able to know if they were followed up with or not. Um. Yeah, so triage and refer, that's what that is. Passing along um entering. Information for water leak service requests, um maybe. A a dead animal on the side of the road. We can enter that. It'll go into the software for animal control. Uh and they'll be able to go handle that. Okay, and so we will. Develop and track um data. Like I said before, be able to present to you what the issues are. What the volume of the contact by types of service. Uh first call resolution rate. Um customer and community satisfaction, not just with the representatives they're reaching when they contact us, but. How they are satisfied with the resolution to their issue. So was it taken care of? Um did someone contact them and follow up with them? And um then data and service delivery. Well, again, we'll have that uh contact or citizen relationship management software. Um provide insights to you guys on where those issues are. So we'll have lots of reporting tools. You will also have access where you can look yourself and look at tools. Or if you have a question about what's going on in a certain area. You'll be able to contact the three one one center and we can pull that data for you. We will be support for the EOC. So anytime the EOC is activated, this uh team will actually handle all the. Calls coming in for that. So right now, when the EOC is activated, a bunch of phones are set up in a room. A phone number is published and that's where people call to get information. Um winter storm Yuri. We went to the police department. We certain staff members volunteered, fallen told to go and answer phones. Well, this staff will actually handle those phone calls. And contact information. And then it will have real live. Updates and information or knowledge based articles that are being updated. So when people call in, the staff can see. Uh what's happening and what the most current uh information is. So because of our dispersed approach to customer service, the community has to navigate a maze of phone numbers. Websites um or locations to get information or get a service that they need. So we are uh creating a three one one program that provides a first stop for that response. Um contact center staff will be available Monday through Friday from eight to five, but you will have the ability to. Um send in requests or questions twenty four seven. And then when staff comes in, they'll be able to go through and answer those. So they just kind of go in a queue. And they'll be prioritized based on on what's going on. Okay, so uh again, the vision, no wrong door. Reduce or eliminate misrobed calls. Offer that self-service but with a personal touch. So again, you can enter a request, but someone's going to follow up with you. Um and let you know where we are on that. Um and you can see down there, just leadership has that information that you need. Functions and services, again, be able to answer questions, give information and also. Pass along but track um requests that go to other departments. This is our um timeline. In quarter two, right now, we um are planning on, well, in January, after January, we're planning on purchasing software. And all the technology that we need to have in place for this. And then we will start working with the departments, building out those. Uh service level agreements. And our request and workflows on the backend. Our goal is to launch this to the public in January of twenty five. So it sounds like a long time, but there's a lot of. Information that's got to go into the back of it to make sure that when we do it, we do it right and that we have all the information and can close all of those uh workflows. And that's all.
Heather, did you say where this is physically going to be?
I did not. So this is going to be on the second floor of the Jamie Clements complex, which is where our office, the utility business office is now. We have a nine hundred square foot space upstairs that's not used. And so we are going to put some um cubicles and uh furniture in there and it'll be in that location.
Good. How many people will be on your team?
We are going to start with four. Um upfront agents, a supervisor and a manager over. The manager will be over three one one and utility customer service. So we're going to kind of share. That responsibility.
Are those all new hires?
They will be. We are hoping we can find. Um people, a few at least, that already work for the city or a city that have a a general idea of how things work. So that we're not starting from scratch. But we do plan on bringing on staff. Before we launch to get used to the system and get trained um on all of.
So if someone wants an instant question?
No, go ahead.
Somebody wants a, excuse me, instant question. They'd have to wait maybe twenty four hours before they get the answer to what they want?
No. No, so between eight and five, if they call or chat, somebody's going to answer them then. If they send it in on a Saturday morning at seven AM. Monday, someone will respond to them. Is that what you were asking me? I'm sorry.
Yeah, pretty much.
Okay.
And and it's that replaces track temple?
It is going to replace the software that's on the back end of track temple, which is a seller. And it that is not anyone's favorite. Software.
Yeah.
The software will have the uh. Ability to answer basic questions though for people. So if the information. Is readily available during weekends or after hours. You know, it's like a bot, uh AI could provide information, but if it needs to be. Um bumped to a human, then it would be during business hours that that person would get responded to.
Like an FAQ or search box or something.
Yes, knowledge knowledge based articles. We're going to have internal ones and then we will have external. Um so ones that the agents can kind of, I mean, think about it like a Google. They get a call, somebody starts talking, they start Googling and then boom, they have an article to to. Explain to the customer. The good thing is too, they can, if it's how do I apply for something and we. Instead of telling them, we'll go to the city website and go to this department and look under here, we'll be able to say, would you like for me to just text you the link to that form? And staff will be able to just say, send a text of this article to this number and it will go.
Help me understand, is this a like a canned program, like a three one one program that you can kind of buy off the shelf and then customize it to your city? Or is this a ground up build? Or something in between with you rocking back and forth?
Yes. Yes, the answer is yes. So there are, when we talk about program, meaning the software solution, there's. Everything in between. So there we're. Working on those right now. There are some that it's what it is. It's a plug and play and it comes with these questions and these service requests. The ones we are looking at, we can build to be what we want them to be. So we will sit down with every department and take their top. Depending on how big the department is, take their top ten or twenty requests that they get and start there. But a good, the good thing about the data. And analytics from these softwares that we're looking at. Is that if somebody's going to the three one one portal online and they're constantly searching for. I don't know, cat adoption. And we don't have anything out there for that. We get reports on what people are looking for. So then we go tailor. Our data to what people are looking for. So we'll be, we will have someone that's monitoring. The workflows, are those getting caught up somewhere? Uh are we missing data or information on the website or the portal? And we'll, it'll be a. Constant change. We'll be updating that all the time.
They're still under evaluation, obviously, for what unfortunately the best product is. But for example, I, just as we were. Um kind of in early stages of developing this program to present to you, uh Tracy and I had the opportunity to sit in on a. Demo that Heather scheduled for, I think Salesforce was the the software. And um so if it's that or something similar. Um the the nice thing about that is it can interface, and Heather already said this a little bit, but it can interface with your social media. So if someone asks a question on Facebook, it can pick that up and answer it for them. Um you can say, Alexa, tell me when the next dumpster drop is and it can tell you when that next thing is scheduled. It, uh I know Heather mentioned this, but it interfaces directly with the work. We already use for the department. So. Um for example, if uh five people entered the same pothole um request into. Um the the uh customer service. Software, then the software automatically creates a single work order in City Works, which is the work order system that streets uses. So it has, it says, hey, we need you to fill this pothole. Here's the location. They are automatically get assigned their job from the system that they already use for their work. They go fill the pothole within the twenty four hour, you know, service level agreement that we have. And then they mark it and City Works complete. They filled the pothole. And then the system then automatically knows that it feeds back into the customer service portal. And then that knows that five people were interested in that pothole and it reports out to all five people. This pothole has been filled, but the street through only got one. They didn't have to deal with the five because the software knows that that was all in. Um you can, you don't have to know the exact location, you know, you can, you can be. Um it it'll bring up a map, you know, like if you want to report uh a street light not working and you're just, you don't know exactly where you are, you can. Uh it'll pull up a map for you and you can zoom in and say, it's that light or in there or, you know, if that um. That signal is is not working or, you know, so it's it's very. Um. There's some really advanced programs that will, I think, in combination of really embracing technology and then having a dedicated. Um centralized team that's really focused on um the highest level of customer service. So you just, you if. You call or however, you know, I'm I'm a dreaded millennial, so I don't want to call anybody. Um ever. Uh I, there are other ways, you know, that I could, that that uh Heather and her team will be able to help get that information out with the help of technology. So I think this is gonna. Take where we're at and just magnify and amplify our ability to serve our citizens. I'm really excited about. Um getting the chance to to implement this. And Heather is very. Passionate about it as well. I think Tracy and I have talked, we are just really excited about her leadership and her vision for this and really think that. That y'all are going to love it and that the community is really going to benefit from this program.
So we're calling it three one one. Or is it going to be branded as three one one or is it going to be?
She can't resist a brand.
Sorry. I am working with my communications and marketing team to create a brand.
Yeah.
So that we can put it on everything.
Yeah.
And Belinda and I were just talking about that. Uh Melissa Reyes and I from the business office, we went to the City of Corpus Christi and visited. They. The City of Corpus Christi and the City of Burleson both had implemented three one one in the past twelve months. And of course, two different sized cities. Burleson's closer to our size, but we went to Corpus to kind of see a big operation. And they have all the swag with, you know, cups and magnets and things that they really are just pushing out to people. They go out to community events. So when we have the neighborhood night out. And those kind of things, we go out and help people learn how to use it, how to contact us. Take service requests um in the field, you know, at those type of events. But um even putting magnets on the back of cars, you know, do you need our help? Call nine one one. I mean, not nine one one, three one one.
The city of Georgetown, yeah. There have been lots of possible issues.
Well, it's that the city of Georgetown, I believe, takes their own nine one one calls. We were talking about that. Because they are implementing the same thing right now. They're about the same place we are and they're trying to get people from calling nine one one. So don't call nine one one if it's not emergency, call three one one.
What happens when emergencies call three one one?
We tell them to call nine one one. We were.
That's bound to.
I'm sure.
Uh occur at least in the beginning.
Yeah, we get emergency calls at the utility business. So it will, people just call the first number, they know instead of nine. Yeah, it'll happen. Any other questions? Alman?
Sounds super easy.
It sounds really, yeah.
It takes a year to build, but it's.
It takes a year to build. And we are taking our time because we, again, we want to do it right. And we want to be able to, day one, when somebody asks a question about something, be able to help them.
Yeah.
And so getting the information into the technology and then getting the right people in place.
Yeah, folks. Try to use it two or three times and it doesn't work, they'll never use it again.
Right.
Right. So yeah, take your time, do it right. Think of me a song.
I might put that on my brand. I'll get with Heather.
You forgot to write you a song.
You freaking writing a song and playing.
Thank you so much, Heather. That's great.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Heather.
Before we hop into the, we need to. Yes, so we need to. Yeah. Um so do we? All right.
Y'all can go on. Right there, chief.
It's three thirty. We have an hour and a half for. I have an hour there.
We taking a break? Really?
Yeah, a very short one. I'm on my island.
Yeah. Right. They have like twelve or fifteen. One hour.
We were there, we looked.
Focus in training for that. And in admin, we are currently at full step and we are administrative staff at thirteen, lucky thirteen. And so that's our breakdown for that. So fire calls always like to to go over these and we do have the two separate areas. And so I'll kind of cover that again, like I kind of always do. So this is actually calls for service. So in FY twenty-three, we had just shy of fifteen thousand calls for service. So really banner year for us. We were very busy and that's up about three percent over last year. And you can see we've been slowly growing each year. As as the years have gone along in those calls for service. And obviously that's tied back to population as the population in the heat of our call per service grows. Then we have responses and the responses are the number of times that a fire trucks actually respond. So like today, we had a couple of structure fires in a car wreck that had extrication involved in it. Those get multiple units and you'll see like in our news releases and stuff. Like six Temple fire units, that would be six responses for that one particular call. And so you can see we had eighteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-five of those for fiscal year twenty-three. And that's a breakdown by station and also by month. What I always like to point out, and it's it's always kind of seems like it's weird, but one of our busiest months is February, the shortest month. By two or three days. We are always very busy then, and that's typically tied back to ice storms or inclement weather of some sort. And then July, June, July, August is typically pretty busy and that is normally grass fires, grass and brush fires. And this year was no exception. So again, if you look back over the years, we kind of had a dip. We we made some changes in our response model. And now we're catching back up with those and we're up to that eighteen thousand responses. Alright, so if you look at our fire breakdown, this is roughly around somewhere between two and four percent a year of our call volume for fires. Last year in fiscal year twenty-two, we had four hundred and sixty-six fire calls. And fiscal year twenty-three, this this last year, we had four hundred and thirteen, so still a very busy year for us. The big differences you can look see right right away was the grass and brush fires. Those were down this year, even though it was still a drought year. We did not have as many grass and brush fire responses. I think folks were being a lot more careful this year than they were the year before. And so that was a good thing and marketing and communications was really helping us get the word out to be careful about your burning and 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 taking care of and calling us quickly on those types of things so they didn't grow. The other is structure fires. We're down just a little bit on structure fires, which again is a good thing. And we do a lot of education of our folks on that. So anyway, those are our two areas we were down a little bit on that made the difference between the year before and this year. So our business plan, kind of where we're working through most all of this has either been already purchased and received or is we're waiting delivery of. And I'm not going to read through every single one of them for you, but a few of these things up there that I think I really want to point out. You can see the picture down there on the lower right hand corner that looks like the tuba cores and stuff. That is what's called a raker shore. That is for shoring up a building after it's been damaged in some way to make sure it's structurally sound for us to get folks out of there and to keep the building standing. We have a extraordinary amount of people that drive cars into buildings in the city. And it always seems to surprise me whenever we get one of those, but we do probably five of those a month where someone hits a building of some sort. And we use that to shore up that building to make sure that it it stays good and secure and and up until they can get contractors out there to take care and fix it.
Chief, do you have a query why we're normally high there?
So I think it's the same thing with our other accidents we have, like I've noticed that an inordinate amount of rollover accidents in the last probably two to three months where the car ends up on its top or its side or something. I think it's two things. I think it's speed. People are driving way too darn fast. And number two, or maybe number one is inattention. Folks are paying attention to something else other than driving. So they're looking at their cell phone and instead of hitting the brake or putting it in in reverse, they're hit, putting it in drive and punching the gas and driving through the building. Kind of the same way with with folks rolling their cars over, they're just not paying attention to where they're going. And or like I say, driving way too fast. So we did get a new drone this year. It's got a really updated, a thermal camera on it. So we can do searches. We do a lot of wide area searches with this. We also monitor wildfires and house fires with this. As a matter of fact, we had a fire down on Avenue F this morning and we got a drone up and was watching the progress of the fire, the firefight with the drone. Even this morning. And then probably the other thing that is really interesting is the fire extinguisher simulator up here in the upper corner. The way we've done fire extinguisher training in the past years was we'd get a basically the bottom of a barrel. We pour a bunch of diesel fuel in it and we set it on fire and then people use a fire extinguisher on it. Obviously, that's not a good way to do that, especially environmentally friendly way to do that. So we bought this and actually that screen there will put up a a simulated fire and then the fire extinguisher will actually, if they're using it properly, will actually extinguish the the fire that's on the screen. It's really pretty neat how it works. So it's all electronics and air pressure. So when you actually pull the handle on that fire extinguisher, you'll actually get the pushback as if you were spraying a real fire extinguisher on it. They're really pretty neat. So a lot of our big purchases that we've been working on, obviously, fire trucks are one of our our biggest expenses other than fire stations. And we've been working on a lot of fire truck purchases of the the last couple of years. Our most recent one is that we're waiting delivery of is our one from FY twenty-two. And yes, it's going to take two years to get it, but that is the ladder truck right down here in the bottom. That's a picture of it up there finished. And then this one here is a picture of it without the ladder. So if you've ever wondered what what it looks like without the ladder, that was it. We've got a couple of staff vehicles that are being replaced that we're waiting on. We have got our first two, which is our new records management system in and up and functioning and it's doing very well. And so that's that's a project we've gotten completed. Our station learning installs have have, we're working on the configuration process on that right now, but we expect to have that project done in about the next six to seven months. So we're hoping July of twenty-four. That what that's going to do is it's going to really speed us up getting out the door right now. And when Bell County dispatches us to a structure fire, it can take anywhere from thirty seconds to two minutes to dispatch the call before we know where we're going. And so we're trying to cut that down to where that's under about fifteen seconds. And so this should do that. Most folks that put this system in notice a decrease in in turnout time of about forty-five seconds. And we're hoping to see that as well. The other big thing we've we've finished up with and we're we're getting ready to start another phase of is our improvements to the training center. We had in the budget back about a year or two ago, a bunch of burn props. All of those have been installed now and they are all operational and I've got some video of those here in just a second. We did just, and so it's kind of good that we got put off for a meeting or pushed back a meeting because we actually went and did a pre-delivery inspection on the new ladder truck. And this is some pictures from that. This is us up at the Pierce factory in Wisconsin. And this is the new ladder truck altogether. And what we do is we'll take a trip out there. We actually pump the truck, we run everything on the truck, make sure everything functions the way it should. We look for any problems in the paint or the wiring or anything else. Really give a thorough inspection of that vehicle, make sure it's exactly what we ordered and working exactly as we expect. And we found about forty-five items on it that needed correction. They are taking care of that this week at the factory and then it'll be shipped down here to Colleen for final finishing of radial installs and that kind of stuff. So we're really excited to get that. We expect to have it actually in the the department somewhere in mid to late January and hopefully have it in service late February, early March.
Now one in the middle of just showing how it lights up.
That's correct. So this is the ladder fully extended all the way up to the top. It's a hundred and seven feet to the top. And then it's got the green lighting on it so you can see as you're climbing.
You can stare away to heaven.
Yep.
Or a Christmas tree.
So the other thing that's kind of interesting about this, we color coded all of our trucks. So this ladder is green. We have one that's all red. We have one that's blue and we have one that's red, white and blue. So we can tell from a distance just by looking at the light color what truck it is. So we know exactly who's who's functioning and stuff. Because a lot of times on fire scenes, they'll get really spread out and so it's hard to tell. That's why they've also got the big signs on the side. It's not because we're like trying to brag, we're trying to be able to see what truck it is at a distance. And that's why the the big lettering and stuff on it. But that's why we color coded and plus what we'll do is we'll color code all the tools for that truck green. And so if something comes off the truck and the guys are working on it, they see a green tool, they know it goes back on this truck. So same with the red, same with the blue. The red, white, blue is a little bit more difficult. I don't know what color we did for that one, so.
So chief, what what's what's going to happen to the truck in Colleen?
They'll put the radios and the Kenstens system and then just any final finishing touches on it.
And who who is they in Colleen?
So it's Sid and Martin, our dealer, that they actually have a shop.
Oh, okay.
They have a shop in Colleen now.
Oh, interesting. Will they drive it or?
Yes, ma'am. It gets driven and the whole purpose behind that's to break in that engine and transmission, make sure it's good when it gets here. Alright, a few other things that we've we've gotten over the last couple of years. The two gators that you see here, one of these is purchased with grant funding. This one here basically does hazardous materials entries and then also some firefighting. The one up here on top does both firefighting and you see it's got the patient care package in it right now where we actually carry an ambulance cot. We use this on our football game standbys and then we also use it on any of the running trails. So like all of the runs in town, when we have like the turkey trot, the I I think it's what the new year resolution one or the resolution run. We'll just do the standby for that and then we'll use this gator with the the cot in case, you know, a runner has a problem, sprains an ankle, any of those types of things. We've got that staffed with a firefighter pyramid and a paramedic and they will use that. What's really great about this is if we go and pick them up, we place them on the cot. When we get to the ambulance, we pull our cot off the gator, put it in the back of the ambulance, take their cot and we're back in business again. So and then the driving track down here, that's another part of the new addition for, and I skipped past that a little bit quick. But we've got the driving pad, the trailer storage, drafting tank and the simulation building getting ready to start. I think we're looking at bids in January.
Yes.
So going out to bid on all of that project in January. But two of the projects sits for the fire department in that is of course the driving pad, which is right there in the middle. And then the drafting pit or testing pit is the one down here in the lower corner. Basically allow us to pull water from that. That's great, basically a great big tank in the ground. And we will suck water out of it and then pump it back in there and it allows us to test our trucks at full capacity. So alright, so here's a few of the burn props and these are, we've actually got movies on these, so if you can't. That will put that fire down down the hallway. We leave these on and and they get really go and they, it gets realistically hot in there. It gets really warm. And there's also, you can't hardly see it here, but there's also an end table on the other side that we can set on fire as well. Alright.
That's a weird way to say that.
So we now have three, three burn props on each floor. And so we can really change up training and do a lot of different scenarios with it. And one of the props that's on the first floor is one that we can actually put stuff around and simulate different, a lot of different items burning and stuff. So it's been really great. Alright, so this one is our flammable liquid simulator burn. And so if you want to hit those.
There are three or two. So that simulated.
That burning, now this is on a low setting right now. Large enough that it that the airport crew can actually do their annual fire training, live fire training at our burn pit. So this is four hundred square foot, it's twenty by twenty. One over here on the on the far right, we get up to about half. We haven't got it all the way open yet. Want to guess what the liquid is?
I know.
Okay. So don't cheat. Anyone else? That's water. So if you say you can't burn water, you actually can kind of. So underneath here are LP gas lines and what's happening is we're bubbling the LP gas up through the water. It disperses in that water and when it comes and breaks the surface, it will actually catch on fire and look like a flammable liquid. But we're not creating any sort of a hazard in the ground or anything around it because it burns clean again when it comes out of the water. But yeah, that's just, that is just water that's in there.
Burning, obviously LP gas shooting through it.
Right, yes, ma'am. But the water gets very hot. Somebody was talking about using it as a hot tub later this year, maybe. Alright, so not really. So one of our other additions we get, we made this summer. And literally from the day we put it in service until today, it has been a great asset to not only the department, but to the, I think, the whole city. And that's our new blocker truck. And so if you haven't seen it out and around, this is it. It is basically like a highway blocking truck. It's got the big stinger on the back. It's got the full signboard on the back of it that we can put all kinds of messages right, left. It carries about forty barricades and about two hundred and fifty cones. And basically we use it to block the road for us so that first responders don't get hit or injured. I think some of the really interesting parts about this, this truck cost around a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to buy and equip to where we were blocking before with a ladder truck, which is about one point nine million dollars. So you see the difference there if it gets hit. I've been told that this stinger will take a an impact from a semi truck doing seventy miles an hour and still be okay. I can tell you, we did see a stinger that took a hit from a semi truck last week in Waco at sixty-five miles an hour. And the truck, the actual vehicle itself was fine, the stinger obviously was destroyed. But the great thing about that is, is the company we bought the truck from, they actually keep the stingers in stock. We drive the truck to Dallas, drop it off, three days later, we've got a new one. We come back and it's back in service and it costs about thirty thousand dollars to replace that rather than have to replace a whole ladder truck, which typically would take at least a year probably to get repaired if it was repairable. So anyway, that's been a great addition to the fleet for us and and we have used it a lot. We've got a lot of good comments about it from several city staff, both fire, PD and public works working out on scenes. So just some scenes we've had from around town. Marth Pet Care there in the middle. That was really interesting. If you've never been to a a facility where dog food was on fire, let me tell you, it doesn't smell any better burning than it does. Being made, so it smells pretty bad there. But again, just some of the fires we've done this year. So kind of bragging on some of our folks, we've got two of our chief officers, Assistant Chief Bush and Battalion Chief Inglekey there in the middle completed there. Fire Chiefs academies this year. These were the ones up here on the left was all new hires getting their probationary helmets and their badge pinning. That's Jennifer over there. She's actually just giving a talk at Rotary. And then Santos Soto, our PIO and community educator, getting the exchange club award of the year. We also, two of our personnel, and I don't have their pictures up here, I just didn't have room to get it up there. But American Legion gave out firefighter year and paramedic of the year. Two of our personnel got that, J.J. Martin, who's a firefighter that kind of roams around for us, got firefighter of the year for all of his work on our critical incident stress management team. He's in charge of that and and takes care of that for us and it's just a a really kind and gentle soul and does a lot of great things with the with the group. And he's been deployed dozens of times all around the state and and does a really great job for us and we really appreciate him. And then John Small, one of our paramedics out of Fire Station Four, and he just actually got moved to three, but he got paramedic of the year. He had went out on a family that was experienced a hospice death and that that person was getting ready to expire. Really took care of the family, took them all, got them all the way to the hospital, took care of them when they were there as well as the family member that was was basically getting ready to pass. And the family just didn't say that good stuff about him. And so he he did a really great job. And so just a lot of great folks working for the department and just want to make sure that you guys understand that as well. We we love to recognize them and the great work that they do. Some more new cadets, this is our cadet graduating class, our last one. Three of our new firefighters up there, again, all getting badge pinning. And then over here, Colin Mullins and Stephanie Ralph at their paramedic graduation. So they just completed paramedic school back in October. So two brand new paramedics. And that's a lot of work. That's about a twelve to fourteen month class, depending upon how your clinicals go. And they both finished very quickly and are very competent medics. And so I'm very proud of them, both of them. Alright, so inspections, I want to talk about those just real briefly. So you can see in twenty-three, we actually did fewer permits, but we end up increasing our revenue on that. And it had to do a little bit with the way that we do inspections and permitting. We used to, if we do like an apartment complex, even though we might inspect ten buildings, we were only charging one permit fee. We now charge a permit fee per building because we have to inspect each building individually, just like it was a single standalone business. And so we just didn't feel like it was fair to others, you know, to not charge that individual base building fee. And so that's what, that's one reason why you see the increase there. Plus just, we've been very busy this year. A lot of inspections, you can see our inspection rate went up and our on-time plan reviews are around ninety-two, ninety-two to ninety-five percent. So another great program we have, and everybody's aware of this one, we've had it for a lot of years and that's shoot your fire cadets. We do it out at Fire Station Eight at the Training Center and over at the Charter School right across the street. We do two, two-week sessions every summer. Every year, whenever we open this, we'll typically open this on a Monday morning. By noon, the classes are full, completely full. And it's kind of a first come, first served signup online. Over a hundred and thirty cadets and twelve counselors have went through it this year. And again, just a great, great time. The kids get all kinds of education from CPR to repelling to, again, fire extinguisher use to physical fitness, to climbing the ladder truck. So a lot of good stuff there and we really appreciate council supporting that program for us every, every year. And that is a completely, totally free program for the kids. And they also get breakfast and lunch provided through the school districts. So just, this is was, most of these are from Fire Prevention Month in October. Just some of the the kids we saw out at the schools. I do want to point out just a couple of things. So this young man here, Dr. Ock, emailed me one night about eleven thirty at night and said, hey, I met this really great kid yesterday. I need to get him together with you. He wants to be a firefighter really bad. And so we kind of worked it out the next morning and our Engine Two crew and myself and and Santos, our community educator, went out and we met up with the young man, presented him with a challenge coin or two and then let him see the fire truck and stuff. And this is him in the back of the fire truck here in the middle. So really got the the letting kind of get that firefighter experience, but he had dressed the day before in a firefighter outfit, was really, really cute. And he just loved it. Mom called me later and she was just cried about how how we picked such good care and and stuff of him. And so again, just great to be able to get out there and do that in the community. And then these are some of our things that we saw at our open houses this year. And then got to talk about Smokey. So Stephanie just completed his, I don't know if it's comfort dog, comfort dog training or whatever, but he is now a certified therapy dog. One hundred percent ready to go and does a great job for us. And if anything, Santos gets mad at me because I'm kind of the bad influence in his life. I I get him to do all kinds of naughty things like come down and play and roughhouse with me in the F station. But anyway, Smokey's a great dog, does a, does really good stuff and we're really looking forward to get to use him out there for some of that the therapy work.
We missed him at the the Christmas parade.
No dogs allowed.
Who said? He was there the year before.
He was and I got in trouble for it. Again, the bad influence in Smokey's life. So obviously we've talked a lot about the eclipse in the last year or so. We're still working on it. We still think it's going to be an event for us and so we're we're still working on those plans. And we've got a few more months to to prepare, but we are starting to ramp up some of our, some of our planning and we're going to start doing a couple of drills on some things. But again, don't forget about this eclipse. I don't want anyone to get it out of their mind because time gets going by and you forget about it. But April eighth is the day and around one thirty is the timeline. And yeah, we're only going to have three minutes and fifty seconds of darkness. But I think what after happens is going to be a real gridlock around, so. Excuse me. This was our fire safety day back in October on October fourteenth. We had over five hundred people attend, it was a really great day, a lot of, a lot of families came out. It kind of ended up in a quasi eclipse event. We, when we originally planned this, we didn't realize there was the annual eclipse going on, but we ended up with a lot of folks out with glasses and stuff watching the eclipse while we were doing fire safety day and it was kind of neat. And then the other one I want to talk about, we we always invite our retirees back twice a year for for breakfast and that was the group that ended up with about fifteen of them that came in and and ate breakfast with us, so. Of course, the nine eleven event and then the first responders event that at the chamber and a great participation in that from all the public safety folks. Rescue elves, just got, can't say enough good stuff about rescue elves and all the folks that participate in it. This is just some different pictures from this year from us shopping and this is all of the shopping carts that we had. There was about, I think we ended up with about seventy-five shopping carts there to check out to the kids and the families coming through and picking up their items. And just again, just a great program. We have tons of community sponsors as well as individual sponsors. So many kids got got sponsored this year, it's just a great, great thing to see. We helped over eighty-five different families and over two hundred and seventy kids this year. And these are kids, again, we get these from the school district counselors. These are the kids that literally are not going to get anything for Christmas that we're out buying for. And a lot of the shopping lists and you can kind of see in some of those baskets, you don't see a lot of toys and stuff. You see socks and shoes and clothes and stuff like that. It's it's really, when you think about it, it's necessities, it's that they're asking for. And that's the stuff that really gets you, I think, that tag, that kind of tears at your heart and stuff. And so my number one trooper I got to point out here, and she probably going to be mad at me for it, but my wife's standing right there. That is about two and a half weeks post-surgery. So she had a fairly serious surgery. We were in the hospital for about five days, but she had to go to to go shopping at Rescue Elves. It's really program materials at her heart as well. I didn't put the picture in there because I would have been disowned and I'd probably find myself locked out. But I made her ride a hover around while she was there rather than walking. And she was mad at me for that for a little bit, so. But anyway, just
She really takes that on as a volunteer.
Absolutely.
And and does almost a full-time work on that program. She really is a champion of that for our community.
Yeah.
We're, we're lucky to have her.
She was heartbroken, she couldn't do more than she worked. But anyway, we get, we're getting her healthy now, so that's what, that's the important part. But anyway, I just wanted to recognize her actually being there, like I said, just just short of three weeks after surgery. That's that was something to me. I that that really got me. And oh, and so one other thing I want to talk about, it's not up here, we don't take pictures of it. But I always, I always want to mention it, we do another program. It's, and like I said, we do it very quietly because it's what's asked by the the schools and the parents. But we provide coats to children in the city of Temple as well, so both Belton and Temple Schools. And this year was our biggest request year ever for that. And it's all free of charge. All they got to do is request it from a counselor, but we provided over six hundred and fifty coats this year and just shy of ten thousand dollars worth of coats to children this year. That otherwise, again, otherwise would not have had a winter coat to wear during this year. You know, a lot of them either share and, you know, I've heard this is, yeah, I have to show my brother or my sister or whatever, but they get their own actual winter coat this way. And, you know, of course, obviously a lot of them outgrow their old ones. So again, it's another great program. It's funded completely by our local firefighters association. Again, they they do a great job with that and very happy and very proud to be a part of that with them in providing those coats. But anyway, questions?
I know that other communities use the burn crop house or maybe other academies, or can you give us a little bit of insight into that?
Sure, so we do rip out that space and provide instructors to help with that. So right now we've had, in the past, we've had, let's see, Parker Heights, we've had Belton on a very regular basis. And then Morgans Point all abuse it. We've also hosted schools, like we've hosted a weekend school for Um, and then Morgans Point all abuse it. Uh, we've also hosted schools, like we've hosted, uh, a weekend school for all area volunteer firefighters. That, uh, come out again at, at a rental rate for the, for the burn building. And, uh, yep, they use that to train their folks as well.
That's good.
Yep, certainly.
That's good. That's good for the region.
Yeah, yeah. I, you know, the, the way I look at it is when we make those around the stronger, you know, we have to call them, like, we had Belton, a Belton truck in helping us on a structure fire today. When I make them stronger, they're just coming to help us, and that makes them, you know, better equipped to help us and serve our citizens. So that's why we like to do that.
I bet you in the last day or two received a request, um, from someone asking if there are any Christmas presents left or, you know. So is there anything left for you guys? Are you?
We have some left, yes. So if you can get it to me, let me see what I can do. We, we keep a stock year round. Like, we keep, we're, and we're getting ready, one of the other things we do, and again, it's not up here, and I, I'm sorry to keep adding on, but, uh, so every year on Christmas morning, we go to the children's hospital and deliver toys. We've got several boys pulled out for that, and so we, and we also keep a stockpile for year round in case, you know, if someone has, is getting ready to have a birthday or something, and their stuff gets burnt up. We will provide them with that stuff. So let me know what you need or what's needed, and I'll see what I can do to get it.
Okay, I'll, I'll see if I can get some detail around that.
Okay, or just a contact number and we can call them and find out.
If you need some help with that, let me know.
Just, we'll do. Yeah, so between two of us, we can figure it out.
That's great. That's great. I'll let them know. That's awesome. Now, it's one of those things that, I don't know, uh, those kind of things hit me, you know, that kind of tug at my heartstrings because there's so many things that. You know, that are people relying with the city, and they just, I'd say it's all done. They expect the flipper tap, right? And, yeah, warm clean water comes out. And is it really the city's responsibility to provide a Christmas to somebody? Yeah, if we can, yeah, right? And that's, uh, that's what I appreciate about you guys. Um, one of the things, one of the main things. And about staff is that those things, we are building a community, right? And those are the things it takes to build a community.
Well, this is one of those things where, you, you know, people usually call us on their worst day, you know? Um, no one ever calls us when they get the brand new car or they get the new toys or stuff. They call us when they wrecked the new car or that kind of thing. And so, um, anytime we can get the good call where, you know, someone's calling saying, hey, can you help us with this? And we can. And we're not in that tr- uh, tragic type of circumstance. Uh, to me, it's, I, I always look forward to that, you know, helping that kind of situation and stuff. Um, and, uh, yeah, you know, some folks just, they may be having just that momentary, that one year, you know, tough time. And then, and so for us to be able to help out, um, you know, absolutely, you know, look forward to doing that. And, you know, the Rescue Elves program, um, you know, just knowing, I mean, just looking at the list when they come in. And just seeing what's on there. I mean, every now and again, you'll see like the PlayStation five or the iPad or that, but that is very rare that you'll see that. Most of the time, it's, like I said, it's stuff that you arrive, when we look at it, it's just, it would be just a necessity. It's that, like I say, it's that pair of socks or that, you know, pair of shoes.
I never had to share a coat growing up.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. It's that kind of thing. It's, you know, so far still the one that's got me, you know, um, got one for a haircut. That was the, that was the, the one that, uh, and I literally called that person. I said, okay, meet me at this barber, and I said, we're going to get it.
Right.
Whatever you want. I don't care. We're going to get it. And so we, we took that, uh, young man and got him his professional haircut.
The little family I had, the little boy wanted, um, a toothbrush.
Yeah. Yeah, it, some of those lifts, they really, they really get you.
Yeah.
And they really tug at your heart. Uh, thank you all.
Well, thank you. Good job.
Amazing.
Yeah.
Just amazing.
Yeah, I couldn't believe the number this year. Normally we're around three to three fifty, um, when Santos told me we were over six fifty. That was just, like I said, incredible. Uh, I said, all from donations. We do it all from the donations from the firefighters association, so.
Yeah, I talked to Santos at the, their Christmas party. He said that he had to drive around to different Walmarts and Targets. Because there were so many requests, he didn't want to buy out what, right, so he, he went like even after Harker Heights and Clean, you know, buying fifty coats at a time. Or, you know, so they didn't buy out the community, which again, that's.
Well, I think, yeah, and I think it's the, the other thing that gets you too is you'll, the people will see us out doing this and they'll ask what you do and, and we'll tell them. And they'll break their wallet out and they'll give us a fifty or a hundred or whatever. And, I mean, those get you too. Those, those times get you too.
Very nice. Good job. Ms. Matt Key.
Absolutely. Good afternoon. Uh, purchasing and facility services update. So I'm going to start first with our purchasing department. Uh, you recognized them in the beginning of October for their achievement and excellence in procurement awards. That's just a picture from that. Uh, looking back in fiscal year twenty-three, uh, we issued, uh, eighty-two solicitations, which is up probably about twenty percent. We just, I mean, just as the city's growing, we're also growing solicitation wise. Annual contract renewals, eighty-five of those. We issued last year two thousand five hundred and ninety-four purchase orders. And we processed nineteen thousand two hundred and ninety-four P card transactions, that's credit card transactions. And every transaction that comes through that somebody goes and buys something, it could be as small as, um, something from Lowe's or a panicky. Uh, a small can of paint or whatever, that's a transaction. We actually go through and audit. We make sure we've got a receipt for every single transaction. So nineteen thousand two ninety-four. And we're the finance in the processing and payment of invoices. So we processed last year, uh, well over thirteen thousand invoices. Um, looking forward to our current fiscal year that we in, we've got lots of policies and procedures. We want to get updated. And, uh, we also have some new solicitations we want to focus on. One of the biggest ones is pre-disaster contracts. Um, this is just getting ready, so we've got debris removal. You remember back in, uh, March where we did a kind of emergency contract to get some help? We want to have our own contract in place because if indeed it's a disaster and it's FEMA, um, where we can get reimbursed for FEMA. Piggybacking on another city's contract's not going to work. We've got to have our own in place so we can get that FEMA support for the contracts. But lots of different contracts that we're working on. It's in warehouse. It's part of purchasing, but it's, uh, it's in the, uh, utility fund and so forth. Um, this is, we have a warehouse out there. I've always kind of said, it's like, we need to keep that level right around three hundred thousand. And you see what's creeped up now, but a lot of it's due to inflation. But the other thing I'm really proud of this division, and it's really a one-person division, is the shrinkage. So when you look at inventory at the end of the year, you've got to do account to make sure you're on target and everything you, that you're properly accounting for what's coming in and what's going out. We basically have zero shrinkage in that warehouse, so I'm very proud of that. But looking at this, the one person that we've had the last twenty years doing this, he is retiring. Um, so his last day will be next week. We're going to be celebrating his service on January fifth. So if you can mark your calendars to come and recognize Ricky, um, I know he'd appreciate all the support or anybody that can come in. And help us recognize him for his years of service. So what we're busily doing right now is finding a replacement, uh, for Ricky in this position. Uh, moving on, custodial services, our division there, this is comprised of thirteen people. We currently clean twenty-nine buildings. Um, this is a picture down here on the bottom left of the new, uh, airport headquarters building. If you've been out there, you've seen the finishes there. Um, so, and also if you've been, uh, um, out at solid waste. You can see the finishes, actually the floors, we've got to keep clean there. So we've got challenges ahead of us. So we're continuing to monitor, uh, just what we're going to need for the future in custodial services. Moving on to facility maintenance, uh, we're looking back, uh, we currently maintain about fifty-eight buildings throughout the city. Uh, last year we processed that, these are recorded work orders. It can be something where a seller will call them up and say, hey, can you, you fix the lock in the store? And we'll just go fix it. It doesn't get really recorded. Uh, but we had one thousand four hundred and fifty-one recorded, uh, wo- work orders that we processed last year. One thing that I'm really proud with them on, I have a picture of the parking garage here, the Fourth Street Park Parking Garage. So, uh, Kelly's team approached our team saying, guys, we got a quote to do cameras that run the conduits, over two hundred thousand dollars. And so our team, uh, worked together and basically we ended up saying, you're probably around two hundred thousand dollars. As a result of just teaming up with IT and our facility maintenance team, uh, and we just self-performed that work to get those cameras up and going. Instead of, and saved two hundred thousand dollars on that. So, uh, looking forward, what we've got going on is, uh, communications and marketing. Um, at your last agenda, you approved an amendment to the library foundational lease over at the library. Uh, by doing that, what that's going to allow to do is communications and marketing to move over to the third floor of the library. So we're working on, uh, and this is a lot of facility maintenance stuff, but we've got to clean out and clean. We're cleaning carpets. We're replacing carpet squares that we can't get clean. Uh, we're doing other things just to make this ready for communications and marketing. Along with Kelly's team, installing a few cameras to make sure we've got a safe environment for those new employees. So that's one thing we're working on. Another, and then once, uh, we get Kelly's team or, um, Heather's team over to the library. Then that's going to free up the second floor suite here. We're moving the GIS team, Kelly's GIS team into that suite. So she can get all of her team together in, uh, kind of one floor.
So that's emptying the Potteet Building.
We will be emptying, emptying the, the Red Hook Heat Building. Um, we are going to have a temporary tenant in there for, on a short-term basis, just because of some movement and the library. Uh, thing that we're doing in, uh, facility maintenance also is that we're assessing buildings. We've got a utility master plan. We've got Parks Master Plan. We've got all, we've got plans, but we don't have a good assessment of our buildings, what we need to plan for, for the future. Make sure that we're preserving those assets. So we, we, uh, there was two hundred and fifty thousand that was allocated in the fiscal year twenty-three budget. Uh, we kicked that project out off with an architect, it's Fuse Architects Group out of Austin. We completed the first three because we just wanted to feel it out and make sure we are getting data and information that was going to be useful for us to planning for the future. Uh, so we've completed those three, uh, moving, we're ready to move forward to phase two. So on your council agenda in, on January fourth, uh, there's a recommendation to amend, uh, the fuse contract to basically add sixteen, sixteen more buildings. To, um, to that project. So we're excited to get that moving. Moving on, construction services, uh, we've got several projects we've completed or they're substantially complete in, uh, since I last reported to you. Of course, the solid waste complex, your quarters building, uh, Parks Maintenance Building, this is behind, that's the top right-hand building. Uh, that's behind, uh, the Parks Admin Building, where now we're able to move, um, the Parks Maintenance Division out of behind Gober Party House. Through that up to become the resource center, uh, that we're making plans for. Uh, we also completed upgrades to the library, uh, heating, ventilation and air conditioning system. Uh, the Leneer Center facade restoration, Santa Fe elevator, uh, that's been upgraded. And then also Fire Station Two, we had some, um, environmental issues there, and now that's building is all restored. Few projects under construction, um, the Service Center Building A, that's the photos off to the right. So we're currently adding on eleven thousand square feet. Uh, these are some, especially the upper right-hand, that's a real recent fo- uh, photo. It's all covered up today though, because we can't, we've got the cart and forms and everything going in, but, uh, that project's coming along nicely. Um, as, uh, Nancy's already highlighted, we're working with, uh, her team on the home program. Uh, Mayborn Fire Suppression Monitoring System is something we got going on, and Susan, I know you go to the summit.
I do.
And we demo.
And you're closing while you do that.
Well, we, we demoed today, the, the flooring, it's, it's became a trip, trip hazard.
Yes.
So, um, we're pulling that out and we're going back with some ceramic tile that's going to be more, um, better purpose for that environment there.
And not slippery with from the pool?
No, it should be. That was one of the.
A lot of bare, spare foot, bare feet going through from the pool.
Totally understand. Yep, we took that into account. Um, one that we're really excited about, animal shelter. We're ready for the, hopefully you all have this on your calendar. We're going to do the grand reopening on January tenth. Uh, this top left photo is a picture of the new library. Um, this is the front. But as you see on the top middle picture, this is actually a picture taken this morning where they're actually installing that. It's going to be a bath lit signage, so it should draw attention hopefully to that facility there. Uh, we'll have a nice meet and greet area down here. Uh, it's a little swampy right now. We need to roll that grass again, but we've got some shade structures back there. And then of course, we've got, uh, forty new dog kennels in, so, um, I'm even, I think I'm going to pick up a dog from there tomorrow, so.
I didn't think you could make it through as project manager without getting. Job hazard.
It is. Uh, we got lots of projects in design right now, as Chief Randall's already mentioned, uh, pu- the Public Safety Semunition Shoot House. Which is depicted in the middle photo there on the right, um, and then the skills pad, which is the gray that kind of wraps around it. We're putting that out to bid as kind of a joint project, uh, because they all just, that touches each other. So, um, that will go out for bid and funding is appropriate for that project. We also have under design right now, the police indoor shooting range in classroom building. That is the, uh, building in orange right up in there. Um, that will be, uh, hopefully, or the plan is to put it out for, um, bids or solicitations next summer. Um, the historic post office, we've got two projects going on there. The HVAC system upgrade, which is under design. On your agenda tonight is a, uh, agenda item to upgrade the elevator. That's the oldest elevator in our system right now. So much needed, uh, to get that done. Uh, you'll have a couple items coming on your agenda on January fourth with regards to the municipal complex expansion, uh, which we have under design right now. Uh, same as clubhouse expansion, we've kicked this project off. Um, this is the, uh, just a, a rendering from a schematic design of what we're going to be doing. The clubhouse, we're going to add on some square footage and make it better dining space, uh, just a better environment for our golfers and, um, so forth there. We're working with, uh, Kelly's team to, uh, renovate the IT server room, uh, down below us right here. Uh, fleet services rip replacement, uh, we need to upgrade the city hall fire alarm system. And then, uh, we're in the midst and continue to be working on the police department, just evaluating that system. On our to-do list, um, Heather talked about the call center, so really we're actively working on this one. It's not really a to-do list. We're working on it. Uh, we're waiting for some design, uh, proposal on this one, but Heather referred to nine hundred square feet of space on her second floor. So that's right in the middle. And it's just, it's really space. It's there. You guys do use it, but it's underutilized. So it's really an ideal location for it. Um, and then that's a layout as what we've, we've got going on, um, there. But we've got to do some electrical improvements. Uh, one thing that we've talked about, especially with this being an EOC and so forth, is we need some backup generation. So we wanted to put this building on a backup generator, so if, um, it, so these, the call center doesn't go down if this building loses power. So very important. Uh, so things that we're working on to make this, to, uh, make the three-one-one project come together, um, there. Uh, Resource Center, and I should have capitalized, Nancy was in the room, she scolded me, uh, Resource Center Design, we're working on moving that together. And that's again, that, uh, where the Parks Maintenance used to be behind Gober. We're working on that project. And the, the last ones are on our to-do list, but we're really waiting for the assessment to get completed, uh, before we really, uh, dedicate some time to those. So that is, um, my update. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Will you back up one slide? Resource Center behind Gober?
Yes.
It's totally new. It doesn't exist.
The Resource Center does not exist. There's currently recycling that happens on the street.
Sure.
And so what we want to do is, there's actually three departments coming together here where we want to create probably one primary. Uh, drop-off recycling center, but inside the fence, not on the road, where it basically makes a mess along the road. And it's not very attractive for Gober Party House.
Right.
Uh, users and so forth. And then we also, there's a program, uh, where Buford's team has the, um, the tool.
Right.
Uh. Library. Thank you. Tool library and so forth. We want to kind of centralize that.
Right.
In, in the center also. And then Nancy's team is working on, um, if people renovate their houses, you'll, they'll turn out cabinets or whatever. That still have good life left into them. So we want to create a program where we can, um, have a place to repurpose.
But it's going to be a building that's to be built.
We're not planning to, our plan is to basically renovate that building. We don't want a fancy looking. We want it to be looked like that we're repurposing something, so.
So it's renovation of that existing building behind the, the Gober?
Yes, that is correct. And right now there's.
Have the, um, paint reblending, uh, where you can, where residents could pick up.
Is there any to do here?
Yep, yes. And in the future, we might also be able to, um, just, uh, disperse, uh, mulch or, um, soil amendment. Um, material that's produced from the composting program. Um, we could, um, host homeowner education classes here for home repair. So it's intended to be a community center really focused on reusing, repurposing, recycling. Um, and getting those, um, items back into, um, useful life, um, in, and, uh, in particularly in. in particularly in support of our neighborhood services program and renovations in our, um, love where you live neighborhood districts.
Good.
Is that, is that going to require new staffing?
I don't think so. Not, not, not the cen- not the center itself, um, depending on how, you know, we advance the programs. Um, I think there may be some, I want to, just going off memory, there may be a, a position um, that's recommended in the business plan related to the reblending program for the paint. But if not really the center itself, it's the programming that's going to be, um, co-located there, if that makes sense. Nancy's team already has the resources related to the home improvement program. They're, they already offer that, just not in, you know, a purpose-built location. Um, the tool, tools are already offered, just not, you know, in a, in ideal, um, spot for residents to access them. Um, I think there's an additional recycling attendant recommended in the business plan, but it's really related to the expansion of recycling drop off, um, to multifamily apartments, not really related to this program specifically. So ancillary additions of staff based on expansions and, and growth in the community, but not directly related to co-locating them at, at a support base.
Anything else for Glenn?
No, no, just that, that, thank you, that's a bunch, a whole lot going on.
Merry Christmas. And for the record, there will be a brand for the resource hub.
311.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor. Um, today I'm going to talk with you about libraries and museums. Uh, so first we'll talk about our divisions, uh, some updates, our fiscal year 23 accomplishments, and then the KPIs for both the library and museum. Um, then our plans for next year and then our plans sort of moving forward after next year as well. So right now we're made up of three different divisions. We have the library, which is kind of a one facility, where we have six divisions within the library. So that's outreach, technical services, circulation, adult services and youth services. And our archives, um, it's currently, uh, located in three different locations roughly. Uh, but it is the National Santa Fe Railway Repository of the United States. Uh, it also is a repository for the City of Temple, um, the Railroad Heritage Museum. It's their archive for them, and then it has private collections as well, such as the Springer Archives. And then the museum, the Railroad Heritage Museum, uh, so we're currently housing permanent antiquities that is located in the Santa Fe DPO. So some updates, we have some new staff, uh, one of them is joining me today. This is Elizabeth Page. She is, uh, the new Assistant Director of Libraries and Museums. Thank you all so incredibly much for approving that part of this fiscal year and future fiscal year. Um, we also have, uh, me with us this year, uh, well, within the past year, a technical services supervisor, adult librarians, two of those, two new adult assistant librarians, a new outreach assistant, um, a new museum manager and a museum assistant. We also, if you remember, uh, Mike Hicks was the museum manager of the Railroad Heritage Museum. Uh, his position is now that he's appointed and he is now the facilities manager for libraries, archives and museums. So he oversees all the facilities maintenance and concerns that we have for those three buildings. Some other updates, uh, just in programming, we have lots of new programming that we've been doing this year and have coming up for next year, um, including support groups. We're working with Home Maintenance Community Development, for the Home Maintenance Academy. Um, we're working with some, uh, local financial, uh, institutions on some, um, home buying programs as well. Uh, we're doing Eclipse programming, so our winter reading program that we had this year is called It's Not a Phase. Um, that's currently going on until January 31st, if you're interested in joining. Uh, but as well as our Eclipse art show, um, we're doing Librarians Choice Programs, Stories of the Stars. And then we'll be working starting next month. So some accomplishments from fiscal year 23. They are, uh, so we did get the TMLVA Excellence Award. Um, we've joined the National Information Standards Organization. We outsourced our curial process and we did upgrades to our genealogy room. Um, we have several new internships programs. So we have an internship with Texas Workforce Commission as well as Central County Services. So thank you for approving those. Uh, what those programs do is both of those entities pay individuals who have difficulty finding jobs for various reasons. So with Texas Workforce Commission, this could be somebody who, it may be their first job. It may be that they've been fired or laid off, or they quit a previous job and have had difficulty re-entering the workforce. Could also be that they got out of a difficult situation, um, or are getting out of addiction and are on the road to recovery. Um, so with Texas Workforce, they actually pay that individual and they do their workplace training with us. So they learn customer service, they learn other skills related to libraries as well. Um, and the same with Central County Services, those are for individuals who have either a mental disability and they kind of work with us. Run them to pay them. So these are some of the accomplishments from the archives. Um, this past year, they digitized over 10,000 items. Uh, these are some of the items that they are, some of the collections that they digitized. Um, they created finding aids, so that is information on the various parts of a collection. And then they were also cited in all of these books, so they provided research for all of these books that were published last year. Uh, so the key performance indicators for the libraries. The first is the number of materials. Uh, the number at the bottom in gray is the number of physical materials that circulated between fiscal year 21, 22, 23, and then the number of digital materials that circulated. So in fiscal year 22, we did change, uh, our vendors, so that number dropped a little while everyone figured out how to get on the new book lending site. These numbers have increased this year. On the bottom in gray, you'll see the number of visitors that we had to the library. So in fiscal year 23, we had over 190,000 visitors. And of those 29,000 of them came to library and museum. So that can be anything from Storytime, the Home Maintenance Academy, whatever programs we're offering for any- And this is a great slide. Uh, so this is the amount of money that we saved the community. Our operating budget in fiscal year 23 was, oh, actually, our operating budget this year is about 2.5 million. That's not including capital expenditures. Um, last year we saved over 4.2 million dollars for our community and that is materials that they otherwise would have purchased if they didn't get them from the library. Uh, for the museum, uh, in fiscal year 23, they had about 20,000 visitors, almost 21,000 visitors. Members, this, these are the people who pay an annual due to get into the museum for free and receive some other perks. Um, this past year, they only had 46 members. We're working, they've developed a new, uh, membership program that we're going to look at implementing, especially with the new museum manager. And we're going to see if we can increase that number substantially. They have some wonderful ideas and we're really excited to see what we can do with that. And then revenues, unfortunately, I don't have a number for fiscal year 21. Um, but what I can see is that for, um, I believe it was fundraising was 6,406 dollars and then memberships and ticket sales was 75,000. I'll have to double check, I may have those reversed. So future plans, um, we are looking at branch locations for the library, uh, starting with this year, looking at the location for those libraries, or at least one of those branches. I'm looking at dividing new positions, which have already been filled, um, with Elizabeth and Mike for our facilities manager and assistant director. And then extending the library hours, that has already occurred, so the library is opening at 9:00 AM Monday through Saturday. And then some future plans for beyond, um, we're going to look at redoing the website. Right now, the museum and the archives are still showing up under the parks and rec. So we want to create a different website where the library, museums and archives can all live together. Um, we're looking at the temple or the Triangle Branch Library, this will be the South, um, Branch Library. The museum plan, we're going to look at a feasibility study and a strategic plan for the Railroad Heritage Museum to get those, uh, financial numbers up, to get those memberships up and to get those visitor numbers up as well. We're also looking for a home for the archives. Um, like I said, right now it's in three different locations. For if you count some of it being in the archive at the helm, because we're, we're kind of low on space. And some of those conditions are not the best. And most recently, we found out about some cigarette smoke that's been wafting in through the Kyle and getting into the archive. Uh, some water damage and issues of that nature. So we want to make sure that we can find a location for those archives to live. And then technology, we're looking to update, especially for the library as well as the museum. And looking at our integrated library system, adding RFID and material process, processing. And for the museum, upgrading our member services, tracking and information on that end. Another song, yeah, thank you.
Name on that email address doesn't match the name on the agenda.
You know, it's funny, I opened it up and edited it, but it didn't, didn't go through.
But you do have a new name?
I do.
As of when?
Um, as, uh, for the state, I have it-
This is the Constitution.
Last month, um, but I was married in June.
Very good.
The DMV is running a little bit.
Yeah, why didn't know that, congratulations.
Thank you.
Kim, could I just add that Natalie did say that Elizabeth, Natalie somehow dragged Elizabeth away from the Perry Ransay Museum in Austin, and that is an unbelievable coup. Um, it's really a great thing, we certainly welcome you. Watching this, I can be fine, we're interested in it.
Exciting, lots of, lots of visions.
Yeah, well, welcome, we're glad to hear you.
I had a question on this. I know that the, uh, foundation, uh, museum foundation is separate, but are you using it for, like, for your memberships to increase those memberships?
So the, um, the museum board?
Yeah.
Yes, um, so they are completely separate, they're not a governing board, uh, they're their own credit, not 501(c)(3). But in terms of memberships, they, they are not working with the museum on increasing museum memberships at this time. What we are looking at is the museum has a part-time, uh, museum development assistant position. We're looking to rework that position into a full-time development coordinator position. That would be a person who goes after grant funding, runs events and activities, and then could work with that board to increase membership to the museum. Yeah, absolutely.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Richard? So Richard's going to take the second half of this, uh, Kim's out on scheduled vacation and then Dawn was planning to give a presentation for the first half of this today, but was feeling a little under the weather and thought y'all might be, feel blessed that he didn't spread it to you right before Christmas, so you can take it home with you. So you'll get an abbreviated first half, because I know 90% of the bullets, but there's going to be a couple of them I may not touch on. Um, in utilities, recently, there's been a significant amount of work put in on the APWA accreditation account. And as you heard, in a recent work session, covered work, we have received that accreditation. They spent the month of, uh, November going back and forth and making sure that all those boxes have been checked and, uh, lots of meetings for that in-person audit and successfully achieved a 100% rating. So that was a, a huge accomplishment, not only for the division, but for the department as a whole. Uh, we're working through the last of the sewer basins that need evaluation. As you recall, uh, recently, you've seen basin by basin, they've moved through and done smoke testing, they've done, uh, an evaluation of those basins to see what deficiencies there are, so then we can move into an improvement plan. So they're currently working to wrap up the last of those, uh, of the basins there. You see in the picture on the, the right-hand side, uh, the service center, there's some foundation work going on for the addition there. Uh, if you drive by there, I don't know if it's that way today, but a couple of days ago I drove by and that white tarp struck out. It looks like there's snow right behind the service center. And, uh, I got a good patch of snow there, but that's just what they're covering their workup with every evening, so they're not getting moisture and stuff building up underneath it. Um, and then the last one here, there was some, uh, project to add cradle points to all of the, the crew trucks. Uh, in utilities, and that helps with access to mapping while they're in the field. So they're not having to carry those paper mats as often anymore and they can also have a direct access point to City Works to help with making sure we close those work orders out on a more timely basis, rather than having to do the word, go back to the office and then do all that in, in the office. Uh, water conservation, uh, that's been a hot topic lately. We're, we're currently looking a little bit better than we, we have, but, uh, are still in a stage two drought at Lake- Uh, if you look through the Brazos River Authority's drought projections, they're saying if their, their 30-day outlook looks pretty good for Belton to move from a stage two to a stage one, which for City of Temple means that there's a possibility that we come off of those mandatory water restrictions and back, back down into the, all very, uh, watering restriction in, in the next 30 days or so. That's assuming that we get a normal January that isn't overly dry and overly windy and causing a lot of evaporation. Um, the lead service line project, so that's a, an inventory. Uh, any line that was put in prior to 1981, we're having to go back and, and test and validate that there's not lead contained in any of them. Uh, we don't know for sure that we have any, but we're going to verify and make sure and that report's going to be, uh, due to TCQ, uh, in October. Uh, manhole lining, you saw a line on there about that. Uh, just a good example of what they're doing there. On the left-hand side, you see an older style brick manhole. So they used to actually, before they did precast concrete manholes, they made it all out of brick and built it like a, a tiny little brick house. Um, and what you can tell is that leaves a lot of pores in there for stuff to kind of seep out over time or seep in, either way. Uh, so what we're doing is we're going in and, and on these older manholes, you do a slip lining in them, which, uh, the far right-hand side there, you can see same manhole and it's got a nice smooth, uh, coating in it, so that's going to prevent a lot of that inflow uh, and infiltration inside of that manhole. On the treatment side, uh, Temple Belt implant has, has had, uh, is still chugging along like a trooper for us. We did have some minor ammonia violations that occurred recently. Uh, there was no direct cause of those violations that, that was noted, but they have been cured with a little bit of additional air that's injected into the system. Uh, and, and we're kind of written off as a, just a peak flow that came in and, and, uh, caused us to, to bump over a little bit there. Uh, the membrane plant, water treatment plant, we do have some optimism that we will start that plant up near term, right, Richard?
That's right.
All right, so we're, we're getting really, really close. You know, I know that, that some of you that have heard presentations on it recently, you've probably heard the same statement over and over again. We're getting really, really close, we're waiting on a couple of, couple of minor things and then- Waiting on the state, uh, waiting on the state to, to give us that thumbs up, so we can go ahead and fire it up and start, uh, start producing water out of that new membrane plant. Couple of figures here, I won't run through all of them. Uh, but you look at, uh, 69 miles of, of sewer line that was cleaned and then an additional 16 miles that was inspected, but, but not cleaned. Uh, so you look in total there, 85 miles, that's been, had a, a look at it and, uh, some of it clean. Treated water in fiscal year 23, almost 7 billion gallons of water treated. And just for a note there, you look in, in our fiscal year 2019, that number was at 5.3 billion. Uh, so that gives you kind of a little bit of a concept of, uh, where we're headed from a growing city perspective.
Is that totally growth?
That's, that's total treated water, 7-
But I mean, totally related to growth, to the population growth?
It's, uh, population growth, usage, we, we have seen some, some higher usage in some cases, but, uh, largely population growth.
Wow.
And then, uh, uh- And then uh, uh dead-end flushes there, that one's just an interesting, interesting one to me. Anywhere a waterline dead ends, we have to go out and touch it, flush it every single month, so uh, just under five thousand times, they've had to, to go out, open a valve, flush the water, make sure you get the junk that's in the line that's built up out of it and uh keep it clean for everybody. Uh, licensing, I'll take a second to plug uh for Don since he's, he's not here today, but uh, Don and Kenton and teams have done, uh, from my perspective, what is a very challenging task in making sure that they have a staff that's, that's licensed properly. Uh, many, many, many cities struggle with this here, uh, regularly trying to make sure that they keep folks who have the right kind of licenses to uh, to work on the facilities that we have. And not only do they do a great job of keeping those licenses, but they also do a great job, you'll see, as you move up through the organization, even some folks. Uh, Heather Wilson Ellis just achieved a, a seawater distribution. Um, and, and a commitment to making sure that we, we continue those licenses even as you move up through the organization. But uh, kudos to this team for, for really doing a great job, making sure that we, we get that. I keep telling Kenton, he needs to do a little presentation on his training program to AWWA or someone, and, and we'll, uh, we'll keep after him to make sure that he, he gets that done over these days.
Does that mean that training's not on in-house, Dr. Stane?
Largely, largely Kenton uh has a program that they're training in-house for that. There is some there's classroom time that you have to have in some cases. But uh, a lot of what they're doing is self-paced study, and they're, they're working study groups, and Kenton dedicates his, his time to make sure that everybody has a good understanding of what they're about to get tested on.
Pretty good.
Because those licenses involve a certain amount of time in the field, a certain amount of time in the classroom, and then pass the test and just math. Do you get to use a calculator on that? A couple of, a couple of things that are, are coming up, some expanded staff capabilities. Uh, we have our, our sewer teams are working to be able to lay extended sections of new sewer line uh in-house, so some of those areas where uh there're smaller jobs that aren't super attractive to contract out. But they're, they're too big for what we typically would do. We're working to uh, to get the capability to do so in-house. Um, we do have some additional pipe bracing and lining projects that are, are still ongoing, and then they're working through various list of, of water line replacements all across the city. I'm gonna turn it over to Richard to, to talk through engineering and projects.
Um, I had visited the water treatment plant a couple months back. The other facility wasn't up and running yet, is it now?
It's, it's still not quite there. We're, it would run if we turned it on. But, but we're waiting on some state approvals essentially to, to make sure that we're legally running any kind of
Using a UV disinfection procedure that's not real.
I think we may be one of the first in the state to use that, so we're kind of writing the book as we go with some of it.
Have to teach the agencies what to do, so they can approve it.
In other words, I drove down Zellia today.
I never knew how popular
They got off the Long John Silver.
You know, I always liked Long John Silver. I think they built a new one that's gonna be all fresh. Okay, so this is our engineering staff today. Um, we do have, we have funded physician that y'all approved for us for this year, and we and we, James has been interviewing I think he made an offer yesterday, and we're in negotiation with that gentleman, and, and there's actually another one who we, who is also qualified. Some rumor in the grapevine that April will have. So what this shows, and this is, this is our capital improvement project team led by James Billick, there's currently three project managers, and one of them also helps me with the development work. She does all the reviews for subdivisions. None, none, she does all the residential subdivisions, I do all the non- residential building permits and construction permits and letters of acceptance, and that's done. These are our inspectors, excuse me. Who inspect those projects. They, they typically have fifteen to twenty projects apiece at any time. Uh, we, we've been thinking that everything is gonna slow down with the economy this year. We haven't, we haven't seen it on that. Amber Kelly is our MS four program specialist. Um, she is, her title is stormwater specialist, so you get lots of calls about stormwater and drainage, but she's really the water quality. It's our national permit for, you know, eliminating pollution in the water system. So she really looks at things that are getting washed down into the storm sewer system. And that really means anything but rainwater. So if there's erosion, she looks at it because that erosion is carrying that sediment to the stormwater system. If there's a spill or a wreck, she, she usually responds with PD or with the fire department. Bruce Cole's our water resource model. He's our H and H guy. He's, he's our drainage guru. He, he model, he looks at models people send to us that include our creeks, alleviate flooding in the creeks. He also is building our, our water model so that we can in-house look at improvements to the system, in-house look at what happens if we get large water coming aboard. So one of the things we have to do is look at what's, what's happening tomorrow. Uh, this is FY twenty-five. There are no names. Some of the positions have changed, and sometimes it depends on who we hire. If we hired the gentleman we had to yesterday, he would probably be in this position. This is the other position I alluded to, and we're looking at moving some people up and some leadership transition in the next year.
Richard thinks he's gonna retire.
September twenty twenty-five, so.
Richard, no.
Some of us are getting older.
No, 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 no. And you certainly aren't.
Okay, so this is a slide that, that, that we've used a few times, and I'm gonna keep using it until all the color disappears. But, and this is just, this is West Temple, and we all know what's going on. You know, the dark blue are the projects that are completed and open. There's four out of fourteen, so we've got some work to do. Uh, the red up in the upper right is the one that y'all approved a few weeks ago. The red down here is one you approved maybe six months ago, and those with the exception of fourteen, which would be the fly over the railroad tracks and, and the creek and the tide to the interstate. Play that loop. Uh, the other projects in red are the ones that are construction, Poison Oak, South P Ridge, the outer loop. One section that's left on North P Ridge, and then the one we talked about.
Richard, what are they, what is Emerson saying on Poison Oak? Or what do you think?
I think they're talking about January, February. Nothing like that. It's really looking
It's about all done, but the striping.
Yeah. At that point, we'll move into the next phase, so we'll be busy. Uh, the one that's lagging a little bit is North P Ridge from Adams to Purview that that's one of the projects that's been in the pipeline a little longer, and we're getting, we think we're getting closer. Draw utilities out of the way on that one, and we'll proceed. But if anybody's driven down the other lately, you've seen some of the detours that are in place already, so there's gonna be, there's gonna be a little drawing pains, and once we get all these detours in place, and then and then they're gonna change as, as, as the work progresses. So we're gonna, we're gonna try to stay ahead of it, but we do anticipate that there are gonna be some people
How come the question marks at Kegley?
That has to do with some runaway acquisition.
Oh, right, right. I knew that.
If for the upcoming award, it was a question mark when they anticipated it, maybe.
Is that number wrong?
Yeah, it is.
So much for my power. I get that fixed for the next. So moving away from West Temple, you know, over to the east side, uh, Barnhart Road is one that's hot now, as you know. T S D's elementary school, so we're trying to get Barnhart Road complete. That's, David Olson came up with a, a plan. He came up, came up for the plan to, to, to partner with T I S D and cloud construction to make it a public-private venture.
Oh, yeah.
I love to take credit for those really nice ideas. Really nice idea.
I was amazed. What? I was taking the credit away from you to giving it to the You probably get it. I heard it, I heard it from David, so. Unless it was bad. We're talking about Barnhart and
It's really important. Thank you so much. Whoever
I, I thanked him so much too, because we were under the gun to get it going, and we were not succeeding. No.
It's open?
It is open.
What's this wind? I missed that.
It, it was ready, it was ready on Friday, but we, we need to make sure the traffic signals and the test signals all work correctly before we
Apparently, I live on another planet, even though I can walk there.
Uh, we've got some turn lanes off of Blackland, the Blackland extension for the, for the schools, and the state is building turn lanes. And these are just some projects that are important. F G G pump stations proceeding nicely should be done by the summer. Bird Creek, Warsey, this contractor's doing a really good job, but it's a really complicated you can use some time to time with that open and drainage issues, that sort of thing. And this one is showing Daniel's drive that was where it's completely rebuilt. You see what was, what was left of Daniel's drive. Yeah, and then, you know, building this new Gabions and the bank along the creek. Those, it's really a situation where if we didn't do that, then we're gonna wash out, and the road will be gone. After we did the excavation. We're some creek is well underway, so we've got Bird Creek, Weason Creek, and Knob Creek under construction. A lot of work going on.
How do you keep it straight?
Well, to a large extent, um, Ed Colackey is involved in these projects, so.
And he looks so good. He's walking, it's great. Yeah, he's doing really well physically. The big guy.
It had some issues with, with his ankle.
Yes, and he's, I saw him a couple of days ago, and he really looks good.
He's off, he's off the cane.
Yes. His pain is really in his role.
This is a project you may or may not have heard of, and it's West Adams heading towards the lake. You see this construction going on, and we know it had a lot of pressure problems that he used. And this is one of the lines that will alleviate that for us. This line that goes from I went three seventeen to Pepper Creek Elevated Storage Tank. Uh, another fun project is the S C Core Exaco Bank downtown with, it has the H frames with the old electric running right down the middle of it. This is the uh TSA and agreement Mexico. Relocate that electrical line. Construction update for downtown city center. Sixth Street is open, sort of. Open from Central, you can get up, you can get there from the, the Adams side. So weirdos can have people park in front of their, their establishments, so hopefully the, this will be done by the summer. And as far as public works is concerned, that one's completed too.
Went to the top of the, I was in the other days. Nobody else parked up there.
You drove up?
Well, the gates, the gates weren't down yet, right?
Oh, to let you in on the street?
Let you get in on the top floor.
I went to the top.
Yeah.
Is it locked now?
No, that, I think the top is, is the section is
Oh.
There's certain, but I just didn't notice because the gates were up as you went from the next floor to it. Good. Any questions?
Wow.
Moving on along. Everyone loves to see the yellow completed across. All right, is that it? It is about seven after five. We'll adjourn this workshop and see you downstairs.